This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Okay, welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of September 1st, 2021. My name is Jack Jumpsick and I'm the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at what 6:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available via Amherst Media livestream. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the Planning Board Meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda posted on the town websites, calendar listings for this meeting, or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public will be permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for the reasons of economic hardship and despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript or other correspondence of the record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the Town of Amherst website. Board members will take a roll call when I call your name. Mute yourself, answer affirmatively, and then place yourselves back on mute. Maria Chow.
Present.
Tom Long.
Present.
Andrew McDougall.
Present.
Doug Marshall.
Present.
Janet McGowan.
Here.
And Johanna Newman.
Here.
Okay, and myself, of course. Board members, if technical issues arise, may need to pause temporarily to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your raised hand and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. Opportunity for a public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and is reserved for comments regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may also be heard on at other appropriate times in the meeting. Please beware, the board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. Please indicate if you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting, is it telephone? Please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address. Bring yourself back into mute. When finished speaking, residents can express their views up to three minutes at the discussion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. So with that, we have no minutes to review, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so we have, let me bring up. Looks like we have five attendees. This is a public comment period. If anybody would like to speak, I see two hands, three hands. Susannah Musprat, then Hilda Greenbaum, and then Pam Rooney.
Mr. Jumpsick, I also, to let you know, I have the timer.
Can't hear you, Pam.
Beck, I have the timer if you need it. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, you want to put that on? That's fine. Yeah, that'd be great. So, Susannah Musprat, you know, state your name and address, please.
Susannah Musprat, 38 North Prospect Street in Amherst. I have two general comments. The first one is that I know you have closed the public hearing on several of the issues on the agenda, but there have been some significant changes to the the language that's being proposed since the public hearing ended. And so I hope you will allow further public comment tonight on those issues. The second is that when it comes to the apartments discussion, I would ask that Maureen provide an analysis of the impact of this change in the two BL districts downtown. She studied the impacts in a lot of other parts of town and completely ignored those two districts which we're very interested in. And I'd like to see it both with the current zoning and with the proposed new zoning for those BLs. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Hilda Greenbaum. State your name and address, please.
Hilda Greenbaum, 298 Montague Road. And I would like to be able to comment on both parking and the apartments when that moment arises. I guess I have something else on my mind now. I can't remember what it was. I'll think of it in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Hilda. Pam Rooney, state your name and address, please.
Hi Pam. Hi Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. Ms. Musprat took the words out of my mouth. I think we have accumulated a number of wording changes and graphic changes and analysis that has been provided to both the CRC and now to the Planning Board after the fact, after the public hearing closed. And hopefully you will allow public comment to take place since you've essentially got new material to discuss. Secondly, Ms. Musprat covered my second topic, which was why the heck that we have the BL analysis for North Pleasant Street and Triangle Street. Thank you. I look forward to those conversations.
Thank you, Pam. So Chris, what was, what's your opinion? You know, we have closed the public hearings. There have been changes. What's the protocol in this? In this situation?
Well, the Planning Board can decide whether it wants to take public comment or not. You've closed the public hearing, so you're not obliged to take public comment because we're not in the public comment period anymore. We're in the discussion deliberation and voting period. But if you feel that the changes have been significant enough that you want to hear more public comment, you can decide that. You don't have to decide right now. You can wait and see what the changes are. I think that you've received the changes either in your packets or via email since the last, since last week. And it may be that after you see what the, after you kind of confront the nature of the changes, that you'll have a better opinion about whether you want to take public comment or not. So that's what I would say is wait until you have kind of an assessment of what the changes are.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Janet, you have your hand up?
Taking public comment during the deliberation period of the Planning Board on a zoning amendment different from reopening the public hearing, which I think we were talking about at the last meeting. Is there a difference between those two? And of course, I'm in favor of the public comment. I feel like this has been a quick process and I'm always interested in hearing from the community.
Chris?
Yeah, so if you were to reopen the public hearing, you would have to re-advertise it. And I don't think you're planning to do that. So it's at the discretion of the Planning Board and the Planning Board's Chair as to whether you all want to take more public comment. You're not obliged to.
Okay.
Very good. All right, so next item.
I can't hear.
Beck's muted. I can't even hear.
I can't hear either.
What happened? I'm sorry.
That's weird.
I muted myself. All right, but I was wondering, are there opening comments that you gave me? I don't, again, there's been a lot of files for this, for this session.
Yes, yes, Jack. It was with your opening comments. I scanned them all together into one document.
Oh, there it is. I think. Yes, got it. All right, thank you. All right, so we're noting the time at 6:44. This was scheduled for 6:35. So we're good to go. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR 2022-03, Amherst College Wayfinding Sign System, various locations, request sign plan, site plan review approval under Article 8 of the zoning bylaw of a complete wayfinding environmental sign design package to be located at multiple addresses on and off the Amherst College campus, including 155 South Pleasant Street, 101 South Pleasant Street, 129 South Pleasant Street, location on Spring Street, 46 Boltwood Avenue, 140 College Street, 22 Hitchcock Road, 22 Snell Street, and 14 Hitchcock Road. So are there any board member disclosures on this? I see none. All right. And we would ask Amherst College to present this.
Jack, may I make some remarks to?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you'd asked that. Yes.
So, good evening. I'm Chris Brester, Planning Director, and I wanted to just give some remarks to put this project in context. Amherst, Amherst College is proposing to install a wayfinding sign system throughout their campus and elsewhere. And there are three places where the signs are being proposed, and I'm sure Tom Davies will go into this in more detail later. But the three places are in the ED Educational Zoning District on the Amherst College campus. Amherst College is presenting a general overview of the sign system to the Planning Board, and this will satisfy the requirement in Section 3.211 of the zoning bylaw, which requires that proponents of projects within the ED zoning district submit plans to the Planning Board prior to installation. The second part of their sign project is signs in the town right-of-way. And these include areas along town streets and the town common. These signs are being reviewed by Town Council, which has referred the signs to the TSO, Town Services and Outreach Committee. And the TSO has referred them to the Design Review Board and Historical Commission, which have both submitted comments to the TSO. And the TSO will be reporting back to Town Council prior to its vote in a few weeks. And the third type of sign or the third location of signs for Amherst College is on private property owned by Amherst College, which is not in the ED zoning district. And these signs are generally located in the general residence district with one or two signs proposed in other districts. And these signs fall into two categories. Signs that meet the zoning requirements as to height, size, and number of signs on a single property. And I think Seth did a very good job of sort of outlining this in the big chart that he sent you. But there are also signs that need a waiver, and the waiver is under, is being requested under Section 8.5 of the zoning bylaw. And they're asking for waivers for height, size, and number of signs on a single property. Article 8 of the zoning bylaw contains a section for modification and waivers. And it says that any section or subsection of Article 8, which is the sign regulations, may be waived or modified by the permit granting board or special permit granting authority authorized to act under the applicable section of the bylaw for compelling reasons of public convenience, public safety, aesthetics, or site design. So Amherst College is coming to the board to obtain waivers and modifications for the signs that I sent recently. I listed all the signs and I sent a copy of that list to Amherst College and to the Planning Board members as well as to Pam if she's able to pull that up or we need to pull that up. Of course, Amherst College had sent us their own list of signs, but it was sort of embedded in a larger list. So I thought it might be helpful to pull out the actual signs that we're asking the Planning Board to review. So thank you very much, and I'll turn this back to Tom Davies now. Thank you.
So Chris, that's the email you sent, what?
I sent it at about 6:15 tonight, I think. But anyway.
Okay, yeah, I have 5:50. Okay.
Nine locations and the number of signs and the types of signs that are being examined here tonight, just to kind of narrow your focus on to exactly what you're being asked to do. And you don't necessarily need to refer to this list tonight, but it may be helpful from time to time to refer to it. And I also provided you a set of maps which show at a large, a larger scale where these different, where my understanding of these different signs is located. That also may be helpful, but I'm sure Amherst College also has that in their presentation. So it's available if you need to look at it or want to look at it, but you don't necessarily have to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So Tom?
Great. Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening. And thanks for persevering through what is a far more complex process than I think any of us would have ever guessed. And Chris and her other colleagues at the town have been terrific in helping to guide us through this. I will, I will make a couple of introductory comments and then we'll, we'll kind of run through all this with our our folks here. We have Andrew Baresi from Roll Baresi, who is our wayfinding and signage consultant and designer. And Seth, you mentioned earlier, has been really spearheading the effort to try to figure this thing out and shepherd it through the multiple presentations and reviews and processes and trying to just keep everything figured out. So I want to provide a little bit of context in that, although I probably don't even have to say this, but most campuses have some kind of campus identification and wayfinding. It's something that has been lacking at Amherst College. But the, the primary motivation for this is our, our president and trustees want to convey the the welcoming and the inclusion that is at the core of the college that, that, you know, we go way, way, way across the globe to attract and bring families and students from all kinds of diverse backgrounds and different economic circumstances to the college. And then when they get there, they can't tell where the college is or where to go. It's, it's, you know, not terribly welcoming. So that's really at the core of what this is about. The the second kind of just general comment that I'll make is that largely what we're talking about here are what I will maybe some people may disagree, but, but we're talking about technicalities largely related to the fact that much of our campus for historic reasons is not in ED zone. We have significant chunks of the campus that are in the general residence. And just having, you know, and multiple dormitories, for example, on one property. So once you have a sign in front of each building, you know, that's more than one, and therefore we need a a special permit or a waiver for that. So we'll be running through all that stuff. And I guess we'll just start running through it and I guess what I want to, what I'm, what I'm wondering out loud is if at some point you might say, okay, well, let's, let's, let's skip ahead and get to the next piece because there's a lot to it. So with that as a kind of a vague introduction, why don't I hand it over to Andrew and he can step us through these different pieces to it?
I can, can everybody see my, see what's up on my screen here?
Yes.
Okay. So what we, what I have here is the package that was sent to you some time ago. Essentially intact, but what we've done is to make slight modifications to the illustration so it's clear. So for example, we faded out the signs that are not in your purview and highlighted the ones that are. So it's a little clearer what we're talking about. We've augmented some of the sign elevations with little inset maps that show you where they're located. So again, it's just easier to walk you through it. But essentially, it's the same information that was sent to you before. And as Tom said, we've been, I think it's about 18 months now, maybe a little longer, that we've been developing this comprehensive plan with Amherst College to sort of complete that last leg of a, of a prospective student's journey or a first-time visitor's journey, which is getting you hopefully to the right place to put your car and get out of your car, orient yourself on foot and be on your way to where it is you're going. And you're going to see that the signage that we've developed is really speaking primarily to first-time visitors and is addressing those destinations that are predominantly those, those more public first-time visitor destinations. So we're not, we're not referring to everything on a sign. It's things like the museums and athletics and of course admissions, those kinds of destinations and parking. And what we've done is to create a system that is, has multiple parts. This first part you're seeing here is that welcome statement that Tom mentioned. Okay, so gateways to the campus. Both primary gateways, such as at the intersection of South Pleasant College, and also down near the entrance to admissions and athletics, and secondary gateways such as on East Drive and the entrance at Quadrangle. And then in various locations, on the outer routes, some small trailblazer signs that hopefully get you to these, to these gateway moments. The other sign types are for vehicular wayfinding. So directional signs like you see here on the left, both larger and smaller. The smaller ones are principally on the campus. There's very few of them. But they're helping, very importantly, to get visitors to accessible parking locations, for example. And then we want to be sure that when you've arrived at a building, it's clearly identified. So the Mead Art Museum, for example, or Pratt Field Admission Center. Again, those high first-time visitor destinations. Smaller, lower-profile ones for those buildings that you're approaching sort of face-on as opposed to from a distance. And then very importantly, parking. We want to be sure that those principal parking lots for visitors are clearly identified as Amherst College lots. So those parking identification signs are part of the overall kit of parts that are consistent with the design that you're seeing elsewhere. And then secondary lots that are more sort of private kind of lots have a smaller identification sign. Then finally, pedestrian wayfinding. So we want to, you know, celebrate those museums, the performance halls, the theaters with banners on campus. And then, as I said, when you get out of your car, have an orientation map there for you. And we have a few different kinds. Depending on the location and application, we have a, a three-sided kiosk, which also combines posters of coming events and those kinds of things. We have a double-sided sign for most parking lots. It's upright, so it's right there and you can see it right when you get out of your car. And on the other side, when you're returning to your car, perhaps there's a poster about what's going on at the museums and music, a performance center and theater so that you know, you're encouraged to come back and visit as well. And then finally, the lower-profile one, which is like a tabletop for interior in the campus, where we really don't want to block your view to those things that you're looking for. And then while not a portrayal of breadcrumbs, we do have periodic, small-scale pedestrian directional signs at those key decision points where you need just a little bit of encouragement. So we provide some directional signs for pedestrians there. As far as the design rationale for what you're seeing, we're really trying to keep things as small scale as possible, though still being legible. All the signs have a very dark background, such as this very dark aubergine color, which is consistent with the college's identity, but verging on a black. So it's, there's a hint of it there, but it's a very dark pale. And the reason we're doing that is so that the signage can recede into the landscape. Doesn't really scream at you. We're using charcoal gray posts, which is reminiscent of the granite material you see in the landscape and in buildings around campus. And finally, all the information is white on that dark background, so it's very legible. So the information is there that you can clearly see. The signage isn't playing a starring role. And, and we're using materials that are consistent with what you see on campus. Particularly in the case of these maps, where we're using granite bases. In some cases reclaimed granite from previous projects that is still stored on campus, but all very consistent with what you're seeing on the campus. We're showing you these examples that we sent to you previously. These gateways are not necessarily, these aren't signs that are, you know, in the discussion tonight, but we think it gives you a more comprehensive understanding of the overall program. This is at East Drive where we said we have a gateway. And we're doing landscape improvements along with the signage that you can see here with granite seating walls and retaining walls, new plantings that are native, and smaller-scale trees as a backdrop, really trying to improve the overall sense of welcome, not just with the sign, but with the landscape as well. East Drive being an important entrance, but we feel is a secondary entrance. So we have this upright tavern-style sign here. And you can see different views of it. It's a double-sided sign. So we're getting people coming and going along College Street.
Andrew, I hate to interrupt you, but is that where the bus stop is? Trying to get oriented.
So this is, this is East Drive right here, and this is College Street right here. You can go back to the plan. So again, College Street.
Down by the railroad, the railroad bridge.
The railroad bridge is right.
Oh, it's further down. Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. At the corner of College Street, running this way, and South Pleasant Street, this is at the, the four-way intersection, we have a primary gateway which wraps the curved corner here like this, set back. And we're making a proposed sidewalk and landscape improvements here as well. You can see in the design here with the granite seating wall here so that people, if they're waiting at the light, can, can sit. It's also designed in such a way that you can sort of see through it. It's not a big wall. It has a sort of transparent quality to it while also having, of course, sufficient scale to be read from across the wide intersection. But opens up the view to the landscape or doesn't obstruct it, I should say. A similar type of gateway here, along with similar landscape improvements at the entrance to the athletic center area and admissions. Where you can see we're, we're realigning the walkway through the landscape. And a similar style gateway here with the granite seating wall and the signage with dimensional letters. Now, this is the comprehensive program you're seeing here, and that was in your packet. Not all of these signs, of course, are what we're reviewing tonight. But it gives you a sense of, of the, the total scope of the program and the various different kinds of sign types in their locations. And we've taken that and it's superimposed over your zoning plans here. And, and we have details of each one of these sections of the map. Not, again, all of these sections do not have signs under your, your consideration, such as here. But in this location here, this is Main Street, and this is South Pleasant Street here. We did have a trailblazer sign here, but through our coordination with the town sign program that we've been doing these past few weeks, we've been able to eliminate that sign. But here on Spring But here on Spring Street is the entrance to our alumni lot. Okay, that's an important visitor oriented parking lot. We want to be sure that's clearly identified with a parking ID sign. We have elevations, as you know. In the packet of each one of these locations that we're asking you to consider. So D one zero zero four is one of those. Here we have to orient you Route nine. College Street and one sixteen South Pleasant Street. And here at seventy nine South Pleasant, where the. Uh, building that houses the human resources is located, it's very important that we identify that with an Amherst sign. Because it does get outside visitors. Also, we have C one zero zero four on that parcel. As well as a a three sided kiosk at that location. And then um, we have a small scale parking identification sign on that parcel as well. Uh, so we have three on that one parcel, hence the request for the waiver there. On this parcel down here.
Excuse me, may I say something?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think that the actual address of the signs that you just talked about. The F one zero zero two and the. C one zero zero four actually on the adjacent parcel. They're not actually on the parcel that has seventy nine South Pleasant. Just, I wanted to clarify that for the planning board members who have lists of all of these signs. So those signs are actually on. I think that is one oh one South Plen- South Pleasant Street. And it's a dormitory building, so the signs that Andrew just spoke about lead you to the um. The building at seventy nine South Pleasant, but they're actually on the adjacent property. That's what I wanted to say.
I'm sorry for not clarifying that. That's correct. Here uh, is a vehicular directional sign, B. One dash zero zero five, which is directing folks, oh, I'm sorry. Just directing folks to admissions right and then a museum and and visitor parking straight ahead. We've been coordinating with the town sign program, as I said before. Uh, so there's no redundancies in the messages that the town sign. A system is 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 carrying and and what ours are carrying. We're also coordinating with them to refine, you know, the spacing between the signs, so there's no conflict there. Uh, this small parking area is also identified on that parcel. Um, uh, with a small parking sign, D two zero zero four. And finally, uh, further support for Alumni House. Um. We have um, a identification sign for Alumni House as well as a. Another three sided kiosk at that location here. Um, and there is a small pedestrian directional sign, so that when you've parked at the alumni lot and you're making your way. Um, you've oriented at that kiosk. And as I said, make your way down the path. There's a little bit of encouragement there with a small pedestrian directional sign. Helping you to get on your way to the main part of campus. Here on Hitchcock Road, we have a a building identification sign, a small scale one. Um, C two dash zero zero three, I believe that's Smith House. Um. And off of South Pleasant Street, C two zero zero five for um. I think that Scott House and and this is. Um. Um, Pontypool as well. So just small building identification signs. For those uh, buildings on on those two parcels there. And a parking identification sign, the second one. For the alumni lot on Sealy, because some folks approach, come off of College. And go up Sealy here to enter that lot as well. Uh, and so we've singled out elevations for those signs we're asking you to consider. This was part of the. Um. Uh, number of signs we were looking at, but in our meetings with uh. The Design Review Board and the Historic Commission, uh, and of course T S O. Um, that sign has moved out of uh, its original location and is located. Um, off of a South Pleasant, uh, just prior to um. Billbrook, I can't, I'm I'm always misplacing the name of that that small street. Um. Uh, because of a conflict with the town directional sign at that location as well. So again, we're trying, we're. We're trying to accommodate and coordinate with the town sign system as much as we can and make modifications. Um, where possible, but that is no longer a sign that we're asking you to look at.
Uh, for what it's worth, I think that's Walnut Street there.
Uh, Chris, you have your hand up still? You muted?
I didn't mean to have my hand up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um. There is, uh, this is that uh, directional sign that I mentioned on North Hampton Road leading up to the intersection. As I said, talking about admissions and athletics and straight ahead for the Amherst College museums and visitor parking. Um, we've modified this message, so there's no redundancy with what the town system is asking for. Again, these are painted steel posts, charcoal gray with a black bracket. Um, that holds uh, the dark aubergine panel with reflective white lettering. Identification signs for Alumni House here. And for uh, South, I mean, seventy nine South Pleasant offices here. These are the smaller scale signs. Um, uh, for Smith House, off of Hitchcock, uh, Scott House and Pontypool as well. And parking lot identification signs. Here we have an opportunity to give permit information. When and when you can and can't park there as well, uh, with regard to overnight parking. So we're doing that for uh, the alumni lot at the entrance off of Spring and at the entrance off of Sealy. And the smaller scale ones for the secondary lots. Um, here at Hitchcock Hall, uh, Sealy Hall and uh, College and Morgan Halls. This is the three sided kiosk with the granite base and the uh, locked display case that houses digital prints. Um, which will be backlit, so inside there'll be illumination. But it's just to um, provide lighting at night for those translucent prints that will be in the case. Uh, this is the one, there's one in front, um, in 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 the lot adjacent to seventy nine South Pleasant. As well as adjacent to the Alumni House. And the two sided uh, style here at the Dickinson Lot as well, uh, near East Drive. And here's that small pedestrian directional sign I mentioned from your path from Alumni House uh, to the key. Uh, again, talking about those key for some visitor buildings like uh, the Music Bill, Arms Music Building, Converse Hall. Where there's often conferences, um, Meat Art Museum, the Chapel, of course, and the Two Theaters. Uh, and this is the comprehensive list of the the signs that. Um, we're asking you to consider. Is there anything that you'd like us to circle back to or have any questions about?
Well, um. I believe, you know, we have a, we had a a site. Site walk here. Someone from um, like to make a report on that. Think Tom, Maria. Andrew. Tom. Okay, Tom, uh. You wanna, you know, go over?
I'll do it, I'll do it. Uh. Um. I got there a couple minutes late, so I thought maybe these guys would, you know, cover for me, but um. So um, we, we basically went to the alumni lot and we had um. Both the plan and uh, the signage package um, available to us, so. Um, we were able to cross reference different locations with the signs and their actual scale. Um, Chris was there and um, illustrated for us, uh, uh, as she did today. Um, uh, why we're looking at certain signs. Um, they're more than. Uh, we would typically allow by zoning within this particular site, or this one is too tall. Or this one is too much square footage and so on. So we were able to have some clarity about why we're looking at the different signs. Um, which was super helpful. Um, and when we started in the alumni lot, we were able to move through a collection of at least. Four different locations right within that particular site where we were able to see. Um, where we would have uh, the information um, uh, kiosk that we see here. As well as a smaller sign and one of the taller uh, parking signs as well. So we're able to kind of. See where all of those different sign types, um, actually even a pede- small pedestrian sign. Really will see where those would all be within that location, so we can get a sense of the scale and proportion and how it would sit in the landscape, which is really helpful. Um, and then as a group, we moved um, from the alumni lot um, out to Boltwood Ave and across the common. We're able to look at um. The the site for uh, along Sealy House and along South Pleasant and look at a few other locations. Again, just to get a sense of the flavor and the scale of these signs and how they'd be positioned within that landscape. Um, we had a uh, a scale question as to what these taller signs at twelve feet might look like. Um, in context, and at one point, um. I was used as a puppet and ran across the street to stand next to a um, estate highway sign. And we could gauge the height of that sign based on my height, so everyone would know what twelve feet looked like. On uh, one sixteen to someone driving by, so we had a sense of scale within that context as well. For the tallest sign that was um, on that list. Um, and then from there, we kind of regrouped about what signs were around and individually went off and visited those signs separately. Um, just so we didn't have to walk all the way around the neighborhood, but we had the flavor, we had the signage package and we were able to see those. Um, visit the other sites as well. Um, and I think that pretty much covers uh, what we, what we had. Um, discussed, but anyone else can chime in and give us a flavor um. Um, to support that.
Who, who was at the site?
I was myself, Andrew, Maria and Chris.
Okay. Andrew or Maria, you went?
That was a perfect job.
Okay.
Yeah, we we measured in units of of Tom for height, so some signs were two Toms tall and one were just like one Tom tall.
Uh, one point five Toms? Um, so i- is this, i- I I'm just wondering uh, for the folks that did this, is this? Um. Can we kind of like? Um. Review this as one package, or do you feel like it needs to be divvied up or? Cause it is quite expansive, you know, you, you know, normally we're looking at one sign. And here we're looking at, you know, a couple dozen, um. Just wondering, you know, what what your feelings were on that, Tom, and and then Andrew?
Sure, I I mean, my my sense was that we were looking at a package and we're gauging how it would fit into. Our landscape, and I think it would be a challenge to go through each one and say. You know, this one's oversized by two square feet in this dimension, or this one is too tall. I I think we were looking for the moments where we found something that might be offensive or obtrusive. Or break with the consistency of Amherst landscape, and I think. At least the the way I approached it, when I I was looking for the anomaly, I was looking for that which might be a problem. Um, so I approached it that way, so I don't necessarily, I think we could probably bring up if we think there was something. Uh, that we want to draw attention to, but I think we can imagine it as a package. That would need to be approved from my perspective without necessarily having to go sign by sign.
Okay, uh, Andrew?
Totally agree with Tom, and I think uh, just Andrew's presentation helped. Um, help us understand the intent of some of the heights of these. Um, you know, as we watch the placements, I think there's certainly nothing that was even remotely obnoxious or concerning. Um, I I would agree that we could look at them as a single package.
Very good, thank you. Um, so that's the site visit report, uh, and I can just open up to the board at this point. Um. I see Doug.
Yeah, I had uh, three, three questions and I guess one is directly related to the graphics and the sign design. And the other two are more. Peripheral but related, I guess. So the first question was about the. Building signs where you listed a date under them. Um, and I can assume, I guess, that the typical date is the date of. Completion of the building if Amherst College built it. I'm just curious if if it's a building that you purchased, what date do you use?
Uh, they're consistent in that they are the date of the original construction. So for example, seventy nine South Pleasant that Andrew just pulled up here. Uh, we purchased in uh, two thousand five ish.
Okay.
And yet, you know, we're, we're, we're calling it eighteen thirty four.
Okay, and then um. I noticed on the town engineer's letter that he uh. Said we need, that this uh, should include the replacement of the failing brick and granite sidewalks on South Pleasant Street and Tom. When, when you were here before us earlier this year. You know, you sort of tried to be as diplomatic as you could that Amherst College had put those in and. The town was obligated to maintain those. Um, it seems like there's some sort of disconnect between the town and and your uh, college. Uh, so I wondered, maybe Chris could advise us on how we. Kind of address that comment from the engineer?
May I?
Yes, Chris.
So I think that the town engineer um, was commenting on um. The sign project in general, and I think his comments really related more to the um, sidewalk. That is being proposed um, around the corner of, what is that? Um, the entry drive into the Athletic Center and South Pleasant Street. Um, and that's not one of the things that the town, uh, that the planning board is reviewing. That's one of the things the town council is reviewing. So I would say as far as um, the planning board's review of this project. That issues related to crosswalks are not relevant. Um, and there is a sort of continuing dialogue between the town and the college about um. Those crosswalks, but as I said, it's not part of the planning board.
Okay.
Review process.
So then the last comment, um. I think was more something that it makes me. Kind of makes me wonder whether we on the planning board ought to be thinking more about. Since a lot of these reviews are because we have Amherst College buildings that are not in the E D zone. Um, you know, should we be thinking about redefining, you know, expanding the E D zone? To be more reflective of the current. Uh, boundaries of a- any of our higher institution. Uh, higher education institutions in town. Um, you know, I know. Amherst College and, you know, they all probably buy and sell property on a slow moving basis, but. Maybe we, it's been a little bit too long since we considered that. So uh, that's a comment, I guess, for Chris and maybe our agenda at some point in the future.
It's certainly something to be considered. So we will put that on our list of things to talk about in the future. And Tom Davies has his hand up.
Okay, Tom.
I can without question uh, tell you that the college would wholeheartedly embrace that effort. And um, would make all kinds of things about our lives easier uh, in the future, so. Um, we we will look forward to that conversation and can. Or, you know, participate however you you all decide uh, is appropriate.
So I assume that that there's like some contiguous kind of. you know, uh, properties that could be, um, readily identified is, is that fair or?
Yeah, and a lot of the properties, I think that would be in question. You know, don't have residential scaled, don't have residential buildings on them, nor residentially scaled properties. So, you know, maybe not every property we own would be a candidate, I don't know. But certainly some of them, you know, haven't had residential properties in over 100 years. So, you know, we could talk about this, the scale and proportion relative to their zoning district. Yeah.
Okay. Um, and are there any other board? Oh, um, Doug, you have your hand up? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I guess I neglected to say, I thought this was a really nice package. You know, very, uh, sensitive and, and the presentation to us was pretty complete. And, um, you know, everything looks tasteful from my perspective. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming I would call aubergine purple, but other than that, I don't have, uh, too much to comment. So, uh, you know, thanks, I think it looks great.
Yeah, I mean, it's some, some of those, uh, you know, the ones with the Amherst College there, that, that, they don't exist, which is kind of surprising. So it'll be a, a welcome, you know, addition to, to our premier sort of intersections downtown, I think. Uh, Maria?
I was just gonna say, it looks more like eggplant to me, but I think, yeah. Very tastefully done and where we walked, it looked like it would just sort of blend in where appropriate and stand out where appropriate. But, um, yeah, I think it's more of an eggplant.
All right. Any other comments from the board? If not, uh, we can open up to public comment. Okay, see none, so well, let's, uh, see if there's anything in, um, public comment. Let's see, we have eight attendees, I see nothing, so, um, I don't know if the applicant, I, I don't feel like you really need to respond to anything, but you, you're welcome to tie up anything based on what you've heard. Okay, good, good. Um, and so someone, okay, Doug and then Andrew?
Well, I thought at the beginning that Chris mentioned that she hadn't put together findings or conditions or anything for us to review. I guess the question would be, Art, can we move this tonight or do we need to wait for those?
That is correct. Chris, what do you?
I think you can move it tonight and you can put on, um, you know, some basic findings like, or excuse me, basic, um, conditions such as, um,
I can't hear Chris.
Can't hear me? I'm sorry. I was saying,
I can't hear Chris.
I'm not muted, am I?
No, I hear you.
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
I hear you too.
Okay. Um, so what I was saying is that, um, you can put on some general conditions like you usually do, like build and install according to plan and manage according to the management plan. And if there are any changes,
I can't hear Chris.
Can other people hear me?
I, I hear you. I, I think.
I hear you.
Yeah. Janet?
Janet, can you hear us?
Can you hear anybody, Janet? I can't hear anything.
Uh-oh.
She might be muted. I mean, her, her volume on her computer might be muted.
Yeah, so Janet, you, do you hear me? No. Um.
Want to try chat?
I don't think we do chat. Um. Someone want to text maybe her and have her like log off and back on?
I, I just texted her.
Okay. All right, we'll just hold this up for a minute. Um, and okay, so I have, uh, Andrew, did you want to?
No, I'm okay. I'm fine.
Okay. Let's wait a, a couple of minutes here for, did Janet get your text? Andrew?
Yeah, she said she's going to exit and come back in.
Okay. All right. We'll wait, um, what time is it? We could take an early break.
She could also call in on her phone as well.
Yeah.
When she comes back, we should like just play a gag and like say we've wrapped up for the night and see what she does.
It's like Janet's back.
She's back.
Janet, can you hear us?
Can you suggest that she check her volume at the bottom of her computer?
Will do.
Oh, there she is, yeah, okay. Janet, do you hear us? Do you hear me?
Yes, I do now, I finally do.
Okay.
Sorry.
And do you hear Chris?
Hello? I didn't hear anything Chris said, but I, I, I think that I left, I last heard, um, about whether you were all gonna wait for this, the conditions. So I could take a thumbnail of that.
So what I said was that, um, you don't necessarily have to wait for conditions. You can put conditions on tonight and you can make them the general ones that you usually apply, which are that, um, the applicant shall build the, whatever it is according to the plan that is presented and manage it according to the management plan that was presented. And that, um, if there are any changes that they need to, any significant changes that they need to come back and show them to the planning board to determine whether a new site plan review application is needed. And, um, the significance of changes is usually determined by the building commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then you can also, in terms of findings, um, have your general finding that, um, this project meets the relevant criteria of section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw.
Very good, all right, and so I see a number of hands up still. Uh, Andrew, Seth?
Yeah, Jack, I was ready to make, make that motion. I couldn't track all of the recommendations you made, Chris, but certainly like the standard, uh, the standard ones would make sense to me. Uh, although as you were going through them, I think the first one or second one, wouldn't that already be implied anyway in our approval? That they would be following the plan as presented or no?
It is, but it makes it easier for the building commissioner to enforce it if you put it as a condition.
Okay, well then, I, i- if you don't mind sort of, uh, regurgitating the standard conditions, I would like to make a motion to approve this.
So the standard conditions are for something like this, that the applicant builds whatever it is according to the plan that has been presented and approved at the planning, uh, by the planning board, that, um, the entity manages what is going to be installed according to the management plan. And I must say, the manage, management plan is fairly slim in this regard, but it's accurate and I saw it tonight. And then the other one is if there are significant changes to the proposal, that, um, they would bring back the changes to the planning board for, uh, review and approval. And deter, determination, uh, as to whether the changes are significant enough to require a new site plan review. And then the second thing I said was that you could find that this project meets the relevant criteria of section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, uh, and then, um, okay, Seth's hands down, Tom, and then Doug?
One second.
Okay, so, um, so moved with regard to what Chris has stated, any further discussion? I see none, so we do a little roll call. Maria?
Approved.
And Andrew?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Uh, Johanna?
Aye.
And myself as an I, so it's 7:0. Closing the public hearing with the conditions that Chris mentioned. Thank you, Amherst College.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Have a good evening.
All right, you too. All right, so it's 7:34 and now we're going on to, uh, zoning amendments. And again, that we've, we've gotten a lot of info, um, on this, and Chris, I, I don't know if you want to kind of give a preamble to where we are as we dive into the first one, which was be the zoning bylaw, Article 3, Use Regulations, uh, Section 3.2, 3.323, Apartments and Article 12, Definitions, Discussion and Vote on Recommendation to the Town Council, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 12, Definitions of the Zoning Bylaw to revise the definition of apartments by removing the limit on the maximum number of dwelling units per building to amend Section 3.323 to change the permitting requirement for apartments from special permit to site plan review for the residential village center, uh, district and from site plan review to the special permit to the general business, uh, district. Uh, and to modify requirements regarding the site bedroom, uh, count of units to require that enclosed, enclosed parking on the first or ground floor be located at the rear of the building and designed to reduce visibility from the public way and require that the principles and standards of the design review board be applied to all new apartment buildings. So it's my understanding that this is, this is, uh, it's been tweaked a little bit. And Chris, I'm wondering if you can kind of?
I'll give a general statement and then Maureen Pollock is here to, um, talk about specifics. So the general statement is, um, three things have changed. One is we're no longer, um, suggesting that you, uh, allow apartments in the RVC zoning district by site plan review. We're reverting to special permit there. There is a, a section that's been added having to do with, um, location of apartments. And I'm going to let Maureen explain that. And then Doug had a suggestion about wording under enclosed parking. So Maureen can, um, talk about that as well. So they're really just those three things.
Hey, so Maureen? Oh, there you are.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. Hold on a second. Okay, so I could, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Little static, staticy on my end for some reason. So I could, uh, share my screen to show you, uh, the proposed, uh, language. And, um, if folks want me to go through, uh, the, the latest slides that I, um, provided, I believe the PowerPoint is dated, uh, August 27th. So I could go through that. So let me just pull up the, um, the proposal. Let's see here, so, um, can everyone see the, the draft language here?
Yes.
Okay, so just to recap, uh, so the, the green bold italics text is the proposed language and the bold italics with green lettering and highlighted in yellow is, uh, indicates the proposed language dated, uh, August 16th. So that's the latest edition. And then the red strike-through, uh, in bold, um, indicates, uh, removal of the existing zoning bylaw. And so just to repeat, um, under Article 12, Definitions, the, the proposal is to remove the, uh, the maximum amount of units in an apartment building, which is, uh, currently maxed out at 24 units. And, uh, we would be, uh, proposing to remove that. And, um, as Chris had indicated, um, earlier in this process, we had, uh, proposed that in the Village Center Residence Zoning District, uh, that it would be by, um, site plan review. We're redacting that and, uh, agree that, that that should be by special permit. And we are still proposing that, uh, in the general business zoning district, it would, uh, the proposal is to, uh, allow it by special permit instead of the current, which is by site plan review. This section just repeats about the removal of the cap of 24 units per building. Um, and so the latest revision, um, is here, um, highlighted in the green text in, um, highlighted in yellow, um, it's, which states, uh, proposed apartment building located on any given parcel that fronts on to East Pleasant Street, North Pleasant Street, South Pleasant Street, Main Street and Amity Street. Within the general business zoning district shall not be located within 500 feet of an existing apartment building. Uh, the distance under this section shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the building in question to the nearest point of the building where the proposed apartment building is or will be located. I could, um, certainly show you, uh, a few slides, um, that I provided to illustrate, um, that proposal. Um, and then continuing on the original, um, uh, no changes to our other proposals, which, uh, the bedroom count gets into, um, how, uh, you know, apartment buildings with 10 or more units, uh, there would, uh, have to be no more than 50% of the total number of dwelling units could have the same bedroom count. We are getting, um, rid of the management plan section, largely just because it's redundant. It's a requirement under the planning board and zoning board of appeals, rules and regulations, and as part of the application, uh, form itself. And as Chris indicated earlier, uh, we made a slight modification to the section about enclosed parking, uh, which, um, is to say that enclosed parking would, on the first or ground floor, uh, located inside the building, would need to be at the rear of the building and it would be designed, uh, designed to minimize, um, that's the slight, uh, modification, minimize the, um, the visibility from the public way or walkways in areas customarily used by pedestrians and the public. Oh, and this should be, uh, I guess, oh, yeah, I guess that is in the, um, existing language. But just as a reminder, um, that in all just zoning districts, the permit granting authority shall apply the provisions, uh, the design review principles and standards, uh, for any new, um, apartment building, uh, under this section. And so it, it, it says, uh, shall apply on those sections. Um, and so if you want, I could pull up, hold on a second. So, um, let's see here. So this is, this is, um, the proposal, uh, pertaining to the general business district. Again, um, you know, uh, the proposal wi- is to say that, uh, apartment building located on our, our main corridors, uh, in the downtown in the BG zoning district shall not be located within 500 feet of the existing park, uh, apartment building. Uh, we do know that there is a, uh, existing parking building, um, located, let's see here, I believe it's, um, right next door to the Black Sheep. I think between the Black Sheep and where Lone Wolf in the, uh, in that sort of vicinity, um, it's highlighted here in yellow. It's along Main Street. Um, it's a three-unit apartment building. Um, and so the measurement would, would start off of this because this is the existing apartment, apartment building. And, uh, measuring, um, you know, 500 feet, uh, apartment building at, um, could be located here at the minimal. Um, so here, here, um, but only, you know, one, um, one could be located here. Um, and, and this sort of just reflect, illustrates, um, this would be the maximum amount of apartment buildings that could be located, uh, facing the, 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 the front of our, the main, um, corridors in, in the BG district. Um, and um, so the proposal in, um, and so we wanted uh, to be respectful of that. We want to encourage, you know, mixed-use buildings along our main corridor. But we know that uh, you know, we need to um, encourage population support for businesses along the main corridors as well. Um, and so we feel that a maximum of five apartment buildings that, of, abuts or face the of the, our main corridors would um, not hinder um, you know, the streetscape of our main corridors. Um, and so you have um, that addresses the, 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 the section um, along the main corridors facing the street. The parcels uh, and with this um, we could uh, allow that apartment building be behind um, you know, behind the uh, a, a, a building facing, facing the front, the front here. So for instance, um, you know, where I'm putting my mouse here, there could be a mixed-use building set here. But um, if, if there's enough, you know, lot area and all that, there could be an apartment building that's um, also existing on the same parcel or um, you know, the parcels back here um, such as where the pub is or will be soon demolished. Um, that, that parcel does not affront those main corridors. So an apartment building could be uh, set back there. Um, for instance, um, there are some existing apart- apartment buildings back here. Those could remain. Um, and so the emphasis is that it's okay to have, you know, apartments in, in the core downtown, but we don't want to have a proliferation of apartment buildings, particularly on the main corridors where we do want to activate the streetscape and provide a vibrancy of, of mixed uses, such as office buildings and, and particularly retail and commercial and, you know, restaurants and, and stuff like that. And um, and uh, we do, uh, you know, we do feel that, that um, this mixture of different uses will help um, support uh, population for businesses. Um, and that housing within walking distance of downtown and our main streets is vital to the accept, to the success of downtown, especially outside of peak hours for retail shops, offices, cafes, and restaurants, and so on and so forth.
So Maureen, let, let me just stop you right there because I see a couple of hands up. Uh, Andrew, Doug, and then um, I think Tom had his hand up as well um, on this BG district, I assume. So Andrew.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, thanks, Maureen. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, this map correctly. The yellow squares are exist, like all five of those are existing today?
Oh, thank you. That's a great question. Um, um, only this one that has this call-out is existing. And so the measurement between um, so the proposal is that if you want, if someone, if a applicant would like an apartment building along these main uh, streets that are listed here, uh, they would have to be five hundred feet from, at least, at least five hundred feet from one another. And so the measurement starts from an existing part apartment building. This is the only known app- existing part apartment building um, along these main corridors. And so the measurement um, from here straight out uh, would reach this sort of vicinity. Um, and this kind of gives you in, in this way as well, this kind of gives you an indication where approximately uh, the next apartment building could be located. Um, if you measured out this way, it's just shy of five hundred feet. So um, that wouldn't be possible. So um, th- this is just to illustrate um, the maximum amount of apartment buildings that could be uh, located along these main streets.
Okay, no, thanks for clarifying. So then the other, like I know there are other residential properties. There are just mixed-use buildings, the one.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Yep. They're all mixed-use, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. Doug?
So the way you have this worded, um, we can't build any apartment building on these streets if it's within five hundred feet of any apartment building. So for instance, the hatched area you show on Amity Street, that's going to be prohibited by the existence of the Perry apartment building. And the hatched area you show on Main Street near Churchill, that's going to be prohibited by the elderly housing apartment building that's kind of across the street, across the park from that. So I think, you know, I think if your intention is that we're only trying to measure from apartment buildings that uh, front one of these streets and is within the BG district, we need to add that language to this proposed bylaw.
Uh, 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 that's a point well taken, Doug. Yeah, so the intention of this proposal is that uh, the measurement would be only applicable uh, for parcels uh, um, that are highlighted in the sort of hatching um, as they are the parcels that up front of, um, that front, um, you know, east, east, north, and south Pleasant Street, Main Street, and Amity Street. And so parcels that are in pink, if you will, um, those are not um, part of the measurement. It would only be um, measured um, within five hundred uh, with um, within the sort of um, the, the, the measurement is only within the um, the front part. Um.
Yeah, I just think the way you've got it worded.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to be measuring from any apartment building regardless of whether it fronts one of these main streets or, and regardless of whether it's in the BG district.
Okay, point well taken. We can certainly uh, take a, a closer look and see how this could be um, more, you know, reworded to be uh, you know, uh, more clear.
Uh, Chris, oh, I'm sorry, Doug.
Well, I had uh, one other grammatical for uh, a word choice edit, but I can come back to that later.
Okay, Chrissy?
I wanted to ask if we could come up with some wording now that would um, satisfy this issue. So what do we need to do? Add some words after the existing apartment building?
Um, let me pull up the, this is the official wording. Um, the, the slideshow is sort of a, um, is sort of a, just a, um, a less technical.
So it would be, shall not be located within five hundred feet of an existing apartment building that is located in the BG zoning district. Is that worded right?
And, and all, and also fronts
Within the frontage.
The, the same streets.
Yeah, it, it has to mimic the exact same statement about east pleasant, north pleasant, south pleasant, that, yeah.
Do you have a um, word version of this, Maureen? This is a word version.
Yeah, okay. Can you guys see me um, making these modifications?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Uh, would this be um, how does this look? Uh, so um, an oppose, a, a proposed apartment building located on any given parcel that fronts onto east pleasant, north pleasant, south pleasant, Main Street, and Amity Street within the general um, zoning district shall not be located within five hundred feet of an existing apartment building that is also, that is located with the general business zoning district.
And, and.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And fronts, and also, you know.
And also.
Or, or maybe the also might go where you had it earlier, right after located.
Oh, here, you mean?
Yeah.
Also, and, and that is located als- also within uh, okay, uh, that is located also within the BG zoning district and also fronts onto east, east, north, south Pleasant Street, Main Street, and Amity Street. The distance under this section shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the building in question to the nearest point of the building where the proposed apartment building is or will be located.
Good work, Maureen.
No, good work, you guys. Thank you.
All right, so uh, Chris, you, your hand is still up.
I'm putting it down.
Okay, Janet, and then Doug?
So I'm wondering, I mean, I'm not in favor of this um, that, particularly that language. But it, you know, it seems to me, two things will happen, is that it will push um, apartment buildings, five-story apartment buildings sort of on the lesser streets that connect in. And I counted at least one, Prey Street, Triangle Street, Lessey, Boltwood Walk, Kellogg, Hallic, Coles, Boltwood, I think I said Boltwood, and Churchill and Spring Streets. And so um, it could just push, you know, very dense apartment buildings onto those streets, which of course are very close to um, residential neighborhoods. Um, but I, I, I'm kind of at a loss of why we're here because it seems to me that the downtown has had the remote, most robust development of residential unit, units. Um, it's been able to do that with first-floor businesses. And it seems to me by giving this option of sort of unlimited apartment units without anything on the first floor, um, it's just going to push out all the benefits we see in mixed-use buildings. And so it seems like we've gone from, you know, let's encourage um, more residential units downtown, but require um, and use, you know, with mixed-use buildings when we're keeping our first-floor businesses robust. And, you know, there's a place for people to go, and now there's people to go there to, now we're just having apartment buildings and they could proliferate downtown. Um, pushing, you know, pushing out existing businesses or future businesses. And on the streets that I mentioned that are sort of like, I wouldn't call them side streets, there's plenty of businesses on the ground floor. Um, you know, it, I'm just looking at, you know, if you look at um, the Bank Center, you know, there's a really robust restaurant there, um, whose name just ate there. It completely eludes me. Um, there's a whole bunch of businesses there. There are businesses along Kellogg Avenue, um, the, the Coffee House, um, you know, there's the Chamel Strings. And so all of a sudden, we're giving this incentive to build five-story buildings, all apartments, replacing existing businesses. And I don't know why we're there because this is the part of town that has seen the most residential development and permits. And so I just don't, I, I, I don't know why we're doing this at all. Um, and I think that, you know, if you want to see some more apartment buildings, um, maybe you want to see some condo buildings where people live um, year-round and not just student housing. Maybe you could lift the cap from twenty-four to like forty um, or something like that. But I, I just don't understand the purpose of this. It seems like it's undermining the downtown as fundamentally a place for business. And we have tons of buildings that could be torn down that have three stories, for, you know, three stories of businesses right now. And also, it's all going to be apartments. And so what is that going to look like? What's the impact on the downtown, the existing businesses? Um, the future growth of businesses in the area?
Thank you, Janet. Um, Doug, and then Andrew?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Um, I guess it, uh, you know, it seems to me we're here, at least looking at the slide we're looking at and talking about the BG zone because there was concern that the original proposal, which did not include this special provision for BG, might in fact result in a, in more a proliferation of apartment buildings. Now, I've never really shared that because we've now made it, made it so that apartment buildings are only allowed in BG with a special permit, which we have, on the board, we have a perfect right to deny. It's not like a site plan review where we're just trying to tweak something that, that is uh, allowed essentially as a right. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a complete authority by us to allow or reject a proposal to put an apartment building in the BG district. So, you know, I don't even think we need this five-hundred-foot language and, but, you know, if people are concerned about that, that's fine. Um, so then my second comment was um, if we go back, I mean, are we talking about the, the overall proposal at the moment, or are we listed, limited to the BG? I was going to mention my one edit on the language that was, is proposed for the, for the bylaw. If you continue down, uh, Maureen, get to the bottom of the page. Whoops. Um, no, go, go up. Bottom of, yeah, there, okay. Bedroom count, the end of the second line. Um, less should, should be fewer.
Thank you.
Um, we use fewer when it's something being counted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Very good. Uh, so we have Andrew, and then Janet and Maria.
Thanks, Jack. I, I would, I would just say to, to both Janet and Doug, I think yes, right? I mean, I think ultimately we want to um, prevent the apartment, the apartments from being built downtown. We want to make sure we've got the vibe, vibrant ground floor. So I, I agree, Janet, with you that it, you, you could say that maybe this shouldn't even be in the conversation, uh, because we don't want any of these. But then I also think Doug makes a great point that we don't have to have any of these if we don't want to. Um, so it seems like there's a mechanism in here to prevent apartments from being proliferated. Um, but I, I do just want to thank both of you for calling that out because I think that's really a, a critical point as we think about this in the, in development of downtown.
Thank you, Andrew. Janet, and then Maria?
So I don't know of any instance where the planning board has turned down a special permit. So I don't, I don't see the special permit as this really rough road that is tough to overcome. I just think that we need to make a decision, assume that any special permit that comes through, you know, might be modified, you know, occasionally modified. I haven't seen that much in my two years here either. Um, and so I think that we should realize that, you know, opening the doors to unlimited number of units in apartment buildings will lead to many more apartment buildings. And we know that the property owners want that, and we know that. Um, we know that, you know, from what we hear from the property owners, I'm not sure. We haven't heard from the small businesses in these conversations. But we know that the property owners want less and less ground floor retail, business, professional. And I think we're, you know, forty percent first-floor business is the minimum of, of all the towns that we looked at, and now we're going to zero. And it's a small downtown. We need to keep it open for businesses. And people are going to shut businesses along Kellogg Avenue, along, you know, Prey Street, which has, you know, a little sort of backdoor businesses. Um, you know, they could be taller buildings. They could be more robust, um, with more apartment buildings. But they're not going to be here if we're opening this door. And I think that it's a fantasy to think that we're going to turn it down because I, I haven't seen the planning board do that. And so I think we need to look at this with hard heads and just say, okay, ten years in the future, what happens when all, you know, there's like six apartment buildings downtown and we've lost, you know, a few, you know, thousands of dollars of thousands of square feet of business space because it's so lucrative to have apartments. But it's so lucrative to have apartments. That's how we get our first-floor retail in, and vibrancy, and small shops, and a place for people to, you know, start and grow. And, you know, really a functioning downtown that I see in other, you know, I see it in Burlington, I see it in Northampton, I see, I mean, I see it in lots of places. But the downtown is filled with first-floor retail. Arlington is the same way, where I just was, um, you know, North Cambridge.
Thank you, Janet. Uh, Chris, and then Maria, and then Tom?
Maureen has her actual hand up, too.
And I just, I just wanted to offer the fact that this is a special permit for use. And um, the SP indicates that it would be by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it wouldn't actually be a special permit from the planning board. It would be a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, Maria, and then Tom?
Yeah, I was going to say, this is special permits are not planning boards, so we wouldn't be reviewing it. Um, I actually want to backtrack a little, kind of on the same theme of this is, um, Maureen, could you tell me why, what, what happened with the SPR getting changed to SP for RVC for Residential Village Center? I, I, maybe I missed some meetings, but wa- was that just out of the blue, or did that already happen? Maybe I missed the meeting. I went.
Uh, I, I think this might be the first planning board meeting that this has been m- mentioned. Uh, there was um, a lot of um, concerns about um, making um, it by site plan review um, from member, um, in the RVC by members of the public and from um, by members of the public and from board members. And so we felt that it would, it would be okay to keep it by special permit. And, and so we were, and it seemed to make sense. So we, we decided to just to keep it as is by special permit. And just to clarify, if I may, so in the almost four years that I've worked with the town of Amherst, I am the staff liaison to the zoning board of appeals. And while the, in my almost four years here, the zoning board of appeals hasn't denied a special permit, but what often happens, or not often, when it does happen, which has a growing list of, of examples, is that when the board has issues with projects and feels that they cannot make findings to approve a project and indicate that during the public hearing process, the applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice because the applicant knows that the board is most likely going to ultimately deny the application. And so that gives that applicant a chance to, you know, to go back to the drawing board and rethink the, the proposal and, and then weigh out whether they want to resubmit an application with all the zoning board of appeals comments and concerns raised in the public hearing process, as well as members of the public that had been actively engaging in, in that public comment period each time. So there is definitely a handful of, of these examples that the zoning board of appeals has dealt with. Additionally, the zoning board of appeals has, in my time, certainly pushed back on applicants to, to lower the proposed building height and, and amount of floors. They've actually additionally have challenged developers to reduce the amount of units in buildings as well. So the zoning board of appeals is, 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 is very comfortable to have these sorts of discussions and negotiations during the public hearing process. And so I just wanted to clarify that and give you the perspective of, of how public hearings are handled by the zoning board of appeals. Thanks.
Thanks, Maureen.
Sorry, I, I didn't get to, so thanks for that, Maureen. But I, a reason why I brought up, why did the SPR change back to SP was I, I wanted to make sure it wasn't just, you know, a small handful of public comments or emails that suddenly switches because I, I really am pushing more for increasing housing and that move from SP to SPR for RVC made perfect sense because that's the ideal place to build more housing, more housing where there's already density. And to switch back to RVC to special permit seems really counter to that. And I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, you know, we, we get these handful of emails and I don't know that that's the voice of the town. I don't know that that's the population speaking. And I just want to make sure that we're not moving back from this big push that we're doing to increase housing, increase more affordability, increase our housing stock. I just thought that was a great step in the right direction. And then to see that switch, I thought, oh, I must have missed a meeting or something or some discussion. So I was a little disappointed to see that switch from SPR to SP when I was, you know, it was like, oh, yay, progress. But, um, so that, that was why I asked that question. It was just, was, was there a push from town council? Was there CRC? Was it from the higher-ups that, you know, said, let's, let's drop that switch from SPR to SP? I don't know if anyone can answer that.
Chris or Maureen?
Well, I can answer it. I think it was a recommendation on the part of staff to change back to what exists now. That seemed to be a focus of attention of many of the commenters from the public and it seemed that it would be potentially wise to drop that one thing in order to have this bylaw as a whole be more acceptable to people. And I think, you know, we're really focused on developing apartments in the downtown and village centers, yes, but, you know, I think BVC can also be a focus of developing apartments. It doesn't have to be in the RVC and RVC is close to farmland in some locations. So it just seemed like one kind of thing that made people turn against this proposal. And if we could put that aside for now and maybe get back to it later, maybe that was a good strategy. Now, this is something that we're offering to you at this point. So the planning board can decide to change it back to, you know, if the planning board decides to keep the proposal to allow these apartments by our, by a site plan review in the RVC zone, that's something that would be your prerogative. But we're suggesting that it go back to being special permit. In other words, don't make a change to the RVC at this time, but you may wish to make a change in the future.
Thanks, Chris. So Tom, Doug and then Janet. Tom?
Sure. Thanks, Jack. So I, I'm trying to figure out if I'm, I'm reading this right because I'm hearing that somehow this, this proposal is liberating people to build tons and tons of apartments downtown. And I'm reading over and over the current apartments description and trying to understand that if I wanted to, right now, people could build 50 24-unit apartments downtown on Main Street by right. Is that true? And if that's true, then doesn't this actually restrict it to only five? And even though it does give you more apartment units per building, restricts the number of buildings that are strictly apartments. So is that, is it true that by right, I can put as many apartments, buildings downtown as long as there's less than 24 units?
Chris?
Yes, it is. Maureen has studied this more carefully than I have though, so she may have some, something to offer. And I saw her raising her hand.
Sorry, I can't raise, I don't have the raise your hand feature when I'm, when I share my screen. So you'll have to deal with my real hand.
Okay.
So currently in the BG zone, it's apartments are permitted by site plan review. And, and the current, you know, the, the bylaw says there could be no more than 24 units in a, in an apartment building. And so that's, yeah, so I don't know if that answers your question, but I do know.
I mean, the, the theory that I'm reading is that we could have a downtown that's all smaller apartment buildings and there's no limit on that right now because it's just by site plan review. And then what we're doing here is make, switching this to an SP, we're limiting, capping it to a distance. And even though we are adding height, we're changing the way in which the downtown landscape could be developed. And so in my sense, my mind, it feels like a, a positive way to restrict the way in which apartment buildings are built downtown. And so that, I'm reading it that way. And so I, I just wanted to make sure that this is a restriction on the proliferation of apartment buildings downtown rather than an allowance of them. So I want to make sure that language is clear as we, as the public listens.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Tom.
Well stated, Tom. Thank you. Doug and then Janet?
Yeah, I guess just to put on two cents at the end of that conversation, I'd say we're now encouraging fewer larger apartment buildings in the BG. But I, I was going to say that I agree with Maria that I am dismayed to have the RVC go from site plan review to special permit. As I look at the chart that's at the bottom of the first page of this, I'm not seeing, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing any, any site plan review anymore. And, you know, as long as we're kind of thinking about it, in that sense, I wonder why we're not at site plan review for the BVC district. You know, I mean, I think we, we were hoping to encourage the construction of, of apartment buildings that are not currently getting built because of the limitation on the number of units. So, you know, if we make them all, I mean, we just haven't done very much, I guess is what I'm kind of feeling at the moment. I would encourage us to at least go to site plan review on BVC so that we can get a few decent-sized apartment buildings in the village centers and start to build up the density of those areas as well, since clearly our, our downtown is too small. I also, I mean, if, I mean, maybe it's a, maybe it's a comment for another day, but the additional side and rear yards per floor, I guess I just wanted to say it's not clear to me why we do that, that, you know, as you put on stories, that really adds up and takes away from the utilization of parcels which are precious in an area where we want density. So I, maybe that's just something to talk about next time. We want to think about this section.
So I, I just want to let, let people know that, you know, normally we have taken a break at eight, but we've, we would like to conclude this meeting at 9:30. So I, you know, I suspect everyone's okay, was kind of pushing through, you know, through this, but we, you know, we, we have, we're, we're going to have to decide, oh, and the other factor was whether we want to hear public comment on this. So that would be, you know, a choice on the board because again, the hearing has been closed, we're deliberating. And so those are a couple of things that if anyone has an opinion on, like to offer. So Janet?
Um, so I, I think we need a mechanism to keep the incentives for, towards mixed-use buildings downtown. And so we don't want to tilt it. I think this current draft tilts it too far towards apartments and we're going to lose a lot of businesses downtown. And actually maybe in the village centers, which are filled with businesses, like that's like the great thing about the village centers, there's like lots of little businesses to go. And so I'd be really interested in that. I, I also want to just like offer up some facts is that, you know, we had a housing production plan. We wanted to see like 850 housing units in five years. And we, and those permit, and that happened, right? There's not, there's a lot of housing demand in Amherst. A lot of permits were issued. What didn't happen were, you know, low-income housing and moderate really income housing rentals at all. And so we have very robust housing development in Amherst. I mean, you know, down on Southeast Street, we permitted, you know, the Southeast Street Commons, the North, North Amherst saw, I can always block the name of that 40R, 40B development. So those are a few hundred units. University Drive had a thing built and then there's something being built now. Downtown has several things that are permitted that have yet to be built. So we are, we are seeing with mixed-use requirements, robust development of residential units. And so we're going to look at the next five years. And the problem, the problem I see with this is that we are lacking strict design guidelines. We're not protecting our streetscape and historic buildings. And, you know, I don't know how many people you need to sign a petition, but there's like at least 900,000 people in this town who are on board with increasing density, but not in, without design guidelines and some protection of the small-town nature, all of which are master plan goals. So I really think we need a mechanism to, you know, keep businesses on the first floor. And so I don't, I just want to, so just, you know, so here's my question for Maureen is if, you know, with your current 500, and I understand the 500-foot thing is to try to keep people from tearing down buildings along the main streets and, you know, with all those businesses and replacing with apartment buildings. I understand that. But even with your, your 500-foot thing, how many apartment buildings could go downtown, including the back of the lots or along the side streets? Because that, those are going to be very tempting areas for development of apartment buildings with unrestricted unit counts. And so can you do that? And then, you know, what would be the difference between doing that and doing mixed-use? I mean, I think there, you know, eventually there'd be less residential units with mixed-use, but you'd have the benefit of keeping businesses or having space for new businesses. So like, what's the maximum amount of apartment buildings that could go in under the scenario? And do you have a sense of the unit count of mixed-use versus apartments?
Maureen?
Yes. So I did actually do an estimate of how many parcels could be provided that don't face one of the, the main corridors. And it would be approximately five or seven properties. And I can point to some of them. So, you know, this property, sorry, let me make this bigger if this is helpful. So, you know, the, where the, the pub is situated in the adjacent property, these two could potentially be an apartment buil- building. This back here could be an apartment building. These, these could potentially, I just, so you know, like this hatching is just, this has no meaning in like, you know, a mixed-use building probably would go further back here. So, you know, this would be interesting to see if an apartment building could fit here. The leader building, which I believe was demolished back here, could be an apartment building. This is where the post office is located. There could be a, a smaller development back here along the parcels close to North Pleasant Street. A very tiny apartment building blessed in the cap, if the cap were to remain, or if the cap were, were to be removed, the same amount of units could, would be provided as if the cap, about 24 units would be provided where Mexi, 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 Mexalotto, Mex, the new Mexi, the new Mexican restaurant, sorry, back here. Back here, of course, is the parking garage. So that's not applicable. This is the Bang Center. And perhaps these parcels could be, become apartment buildings. You know, this is the Boltwood Inn here and the church. So that, that wouldn't really, obviously wouldn't be applicable. And the police station. And there is a, I don't know if this is a duplex or an apartment building or a converted dwelling. There are multiple units in, in this building and this is an apartment building. And so these are residential uses. So perhaps those could become apartment buildings. I think it's too tight back here. And of course, this is the library and, you know, the parking lot and, and the church. So I, I don't think any of these would become apartment buildings. So it's just really, you know, these, these parcels here could potentially, that are not facing the road, they're in the rare. And that they, you know, you would say, you know, we all know that we need residents to help support businesses. They go hand in hand. And these parcels back here aren't facing our main corridors. So, you know, the planning department feels comfortable to say, you know, apartment building behind a mixed-use building that's, you know, that, that is in the rare is acceptable. And, you know, in, in this, where the leader building property is, doesn't really make sense to have a mixed-use building back here, to have retail go back in the sort of rear parcel back here away from the main corridor. And, and back here, Spring Street, you know, that's when you're starting to transition back into the RG. And so you could ask yourself, is, is it, you know, we, is apartments an appropriate place on Spring Street? The planning department believes that it is also another appropriate place to have apartments.
Thank you for those, Maureen. I think, you know, you, you, you're convincing to me anyway with regard to this plan. So.
But there are businesses. But there are businesses on those streets now that would be eliminated and you might not think it's a good spot for a business, but there's lots of businesses that are kind of off the street like the, by the Amherst Cinema has a ton of small businesses that you walk to. It's actually super interesting to walk down that street. You know?
So Amherst Cinemas is, is back here. Yeah, I don't think that, you know, I don't think there's enough lot area to to put a, a additional building back here uh to be perfectly honest. Um, and so with this, you know, besides this one, you know, if, if you meet the sort of buffer, um, so you know, that apartment building would be, you know, would be larger and that would be, that would be it. I don't, I don't think you're going to have, I don't think you're going to have a mixed use building and apartment building in this little tiny section here, to be perfectly honest.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, Maureen, Janet, Andrew.
Thanks, Jack. Try to keep it brief. I don't know that, I mean, from what I'm hearing, we all would like to make sure that we can bring in additional residential density, but I don't know that anybody is interested in having apartment on ground floor. Why don't we just say no apartments, no new apartments confront Amity, Main, South Pleasant or North Pleasant? And then just let the, you know, let developers figure out how they can get density in either through mixed use building or some type, type of creative multiple building scenario where they have a you know, some type of commercial upfront and a standalone apartment building behind it. And I, from what I'm hearing, and I would, I would agree with this. I think that's really what we're trying to accomplish. Keep that street front vibrant. Maybe we can just make it really simple. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. Any comment, Doug?
I think what we have before us substantially limits the number of apartments, especially in light of the zoning board of appeals having to issue a special permit for them in the BG. Um, I, 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 so I'm fine with this as, as proposed right now.
Yep, I, I, I agree, Doug. Um, so I think um that the, the things I've heard is like, do, do we want to modify the, 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 the the village district with regard to what Doug had mentioned before? And then do we want to hear public comment? Um, at all, um, since the hearing is closed. Um, don't know the general sentiment of the board on those, on those issues. So, um, Andrew?
I, I don't want to pile on him on my last comment, so apologies for this, but I think it's we can, I, I think Janet makes a really good point, right? Like we can just say no to all of them. But if, if none of us want apartment there anyway, why not just close the door now? And, and why, why not? I mean, why, why let other planning boards make that decision? So um, I understand either mechanism will probably have the same, same outcome. But if none of us really thinks that we want apartments on ground floor, then, then we can be pretty definitive about it um by tweaking this. Thanks.
Doug?
Yeah, I guess I, I don't, I can imagine that a couple of apartment buildings downtown would be okay.
And that's certainly the, the limit is, you know, not more than the several that uh Maureen had, had sketched out there. So it's, it's not doesn't seem like a, a huge uh loss. And you know, again, we, we, we've got housing issues in the town that we want to resolve. Um, what about the uh, oh, Janet, you have your hand up.
I'm not sure if I said this earlier, but there's, there's no reason why um the property owners wouldn't take the buildings that are along those main streets. And some of them are very low and just put up apartment buildings and even, you know, the older buildings that we all like, there's no protection of those. And those can be taken down. So um, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm with Andrew. I, I think it's a decent compromise. Um, I would like to see a cap on the units, you know, on the, on the units behind. I just think you should think about like what, how many cats will jump out of that bag and you'll be surprised. Um, and I do support having more people living downtown, but I just think we need to keep the balance and keep spaces.
Great. Any, any, um, oh, um, Maria?
Uh, I just want to reiterate that fact that Tom brought up earlier, which is, this is actually making it more restrictive as far as putting more apartments downtown because it's a special permit. So I feel like this is pretty safe without totally eliminating that possibility because I feel like, you know, designers, architects, developers, they're creative bunch and they might come up with a solution that actually works pretty well for the street edge. Um, you know, you just never know and to eliminate that possibility entirely might be short sighted. And, and especially since now we're moving to special permit, there's a lot of lot more purview, a lot more oversight onto this. Um, and so I want to fold back into the VC, I really want to push for making, I mean, from the very beginning back when we still had the zoning subcommittee and we were talking about how to bring more of this um missing middle and more housing. One of the first things was relax apartment um, right, uh, building rights as far as the village centers. I mean, that's why they're village centers. They're designed to be sort of this uh intermediate density area. That's not downtown. It's not residential. It's a sort of, you know, a good balance between the two and that's the perfect place for apartments. And so, uh, you know, relaxing apartment uh, what do you call it? The, the uses, the, the zones that allow more apartments was um sort of like low hanging fruit in my mind. And so that's my one last push is, you know, I appreciate this really careful study of the downtown, but I do think that VC, both RVC and BBC, I don't know, I can't even find where BBC is. I think there's only a few places. But um, it just, that's my last push is um, uh, yeah, to, to sort of relax the apartments in that area. But um, but as far as the downtown, I, I feel like it's very safe now. It's in fact more difficult than in the past, like Tom had pointed out. So um, I'm fine with that as written. Um, I guess another question is for Chris is are we going beyond the original written uh version that was already sort of closed as far as the public hearing? I mean, is this still in the same realm of the original um scope of the amendment article so that we're still good to you know, not have to restart the process?
I think we're still within the scope. We've spoken with, uh, Rob and I have spoken with Joel Bard, our town attorney, and he's um talked to us about about what is um, what would be considered within the scope of what was originally presented to town council. And everything that we've done here is um less, allowing less change than would uh have been allowed. So, you know, we're narrowing it from what was originally proposed to town council. So that would be definitely within the scope.
Hey, uh, Maureen, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, page one of three of the uh, of the post zoning bylaw and it and again, I, SP is crossed out and then it has SP um, again, but, but I'm, I'm reading this. So the village district is, is, would be site plan review, not a special permit. Is that correct or?
So yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry for any potential confusion. So uh, currently the zoning bylaw allows um apartments by s- uh special permit in the village center residence zoning districts. Uh, the planning department had previously uh recommended that it be by site plan review or su- uh, and um, yeah, so we originally proposed that it be allowed by site plan review. And now since we've heard sort of feedback um from folks uh about their concerns about that permit change, um, we're suggesting that, all right, we'll, we'll just keep it a special permit. But you know, if the planning board uh wants to recommend that we take back the takeback and um, and do it by site plan review, that, that's, you know, that, that please, please be, you know, please uh indicate that as a board um and we can um revise it.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that. Um, it seems, you know, uh seems like, you know, Doug's suggestion that, you know, we, it should go back to um uh, back to site plan review uh and, you know, make it a little bit easier. I mean, there's enough restrictions, I think, in terms of how, you know, apartments would be able to be, you know, built there. I mean, it's, you would need, you know, generous setback and things like that. Um, but I'd be interested in hearing what other board members think about that. So we have Janet and
So my, I have a cut, so I have a sort of a process question. So we're, we're kind of honing in on the BG. Um, I would like to hear members of the public and talk about that. And then if we're going to go off into the village centers, I would like to look at the Maureen's um diagrams. I also would like to take a break. So maybe we could hear some residents and then take a break and come back. But I, I'm kind of, I haven't really, I, I'd like, I'd like to figure, like, I don't know if we can finish the BG, but I think if we're going to talk about the village centers, um it'd be good to look at some of those diagrams too. So it's a hard to manage. I can see it.
Yeah, i- it is eight thirty. Um, um, and then I guess as, as a board, we'd have to entertain whether we, we take public comment or not. Um, I see Johanna and Andrew's hands up and then Doug. So Johanna?
Great, thanks. Um, it's been a really interesting conversation tonight. Um, on my understanding, maybe I misinterpreted this, but if we want to take public comment, we basically have to reopen the public hearing. And in order to do that, we need to give two weeks' notice. And given that we've had apartments on the agenda five times at the planning board and the other um, I'm a little bit inclined to, to move ahead um and not reopen the public hearing. Um, in terms of the downtown, um, I have been, I think, you know, people have said like this actually clarifies and restricts um apartments downtown. And so I think I've been moved by that and I'm comfortable with the plan. One question that I had, like Maureen, on your drawing, it kind of had these little yellow blocks. Those are purely theoretical, right? Like it could technically be a much longer strip of frontage that is apartment as long as it's five hundred feet away from the clo- next one, right?
Yeah, uh, correct. So the one that has the call out that says existing, that is the existing building size is a three unit building. Um, and then the other ones, um, those are just measurements of what five hundred feet would look like. And I just put in a little box. So that doesn't indicate the size of the, the building. Um, and so, you know, so then let's just pretend there is that, you know, the proposed apartment building, um, the five hundred foot uh measurement would be based off of the corners of that building to the next um, next spot along the main, main corridors.
Okay. And then, you know, the village centers, I mean, I don't know, it seems to me like North Square is thriving and getting a lot of attention and like you know, I see some of the other village centers and they kind of feel like they need, they need more density to support more of the cool shops that then everybody who kind of lives in that catchment area will be. So I'm leaning towards what Maria is saying, you know, like let's, let's steer residential to our village centers. And I do think doing it by site plan review rather than special permit would, would help kind of ease that. So those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you, Hannah. Uh, Doug?
I just wanted to say I, I agree with what Maria was saying and, and what John, Johanna said. Thank you.
Okay, so um, it, it doesn't work. We're going to take public comment. Um, which is, which is, again, the, the hearing's been closed. But um, it seems like the one um suggestion that, that's, that maybe we can move is, is uh changing the uh apartments in the, in the, in the village districts, you know, back to site plan review. Is that something that we can uh kind of have a straw poll on uh regarding recommendation and then maybe just move to an overall recommendation of, of the zoning bylaw and and, and wrap this up. So uh Janet?
Just to clarify, this is actually probably our third detailed discussion, deep discussion of apartments. We barely discussed it May twelfth. We never discussed it on June sixteen. And then on July fourth, fourteenth, we had four or five zoning, four zoning amendments we were talking plus the VL. And then we had the public hearing on July twenty first, which was five hours long with four zoning amendments. So I, I think this is the longest discussion we've had. And I think we shouldn't let the public have some participation in it because it, it's been not super deep. I, I would be really unhappy if we voted on this whole thing and we haven't gone through Maureen's charts. I don't know why she prepared them if we're not going to talk about them. And I think I would like to look at the different village centers and the, the changes in zoning before I decide if SPR, SP is the way to go. Um, I had a lot of questions about those.
Okay, uh, Doug and then maybe Maureen, you can respond to that. But Doug?
Well, it sounded, Jack, like you were ready for some sort of motion. So I guess I'll put out the motion that we adopt this or recommend of town council that this this proposed change be adopted with the one revision that the RVC stay at site plan review. And we can either move that forward or not.
Sounds good. Is there someone that wants to second that? Then we can have a discussion. Maria?
Second.
Okay, so um, uh, Maureen, what um what can you present to us for the village centers uh with regard to what Janet was referring to?
Uh, sure. Uh, let me pull up my PowerPoint. Um, just bear with me for one second. Um, so can folks see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so um I believe um you would want to um see the slides related to the um, uh, RVC, the residence, uh, the village, the residence village center and the BBC, the business village center. So um, I'm, we're gonna, I'll show you um the North Amherst um area that includes both the RVC and the BBC. Um, so this is the intersection of uh North Pleasant and uh Route sixty three, which is um Meadow Street, then which then turns into Pine Street. Um, and just as some landmarks uh to orient you, um, this little triangle here uh is the North Library, Amherst Library. Um, the parcel uh to the west of that is the North Amherst School Building. And then this corner lot um is the Amherst uh, uh, Zion Church. And so in the the RVC is shown in beige and um per table three, uh, the dimensional regulations, um, a lot size of two, of um, two and a half acres would provide a three floor, twenty five unit apartment building um with um also maintaining uh forty percent of that of the land per open space and landscaping and whatnot. Um, there is only one parcel within this focus area that it, it is um more than um two and a half acres um that could provide um, um that would benefit from the, the cap being removed. And that's this parcel right here, which currently has forty eight uh, units on, on that site. Um, so you know, maybe uh, I would, so theoretically, they could add a couple more on this property. It's very unlikely, if not impossible, since um there, um, it is adjacent to the Mill River and so it, with its associated wetlands. Um, and so I, I, which, so then that would limit the amount of developable land and whatnot. Um, so that is very uh unlikely that, that would be developed or redeveloped or expanded upon. And then I wanted to And then I wanted to, uh, to show, um, you know, there are uh, a lot of smaller parcels. And so I wanted to um, see how many units could be provided um, along Meadow Street. Um, so I looked at the parcels that you can see the arrow, so the parcels between here and here. Um, I added up the lot area for all those parcels. Which get you um, two hundred and six thousand square feet. That's probably hmm, four, five acres. I, I don't know off the top of my head. Um, and so with that. Um, you could provide forty-eight units um, that would be on, in a, within a three-floor building. Um, and uh, they, again, you would, the, the applicant would need to maintain uh, forty percent uh, for open space. So I, I would envision a sort of a long, you know, y- you could envision maybe two buildings or maybe a long. Um, sort of n- narrow building, um, think of like maybe brownstones or something like that where there's um, you know. Uh, gracious front yard, and then there'd probably be a driveway that goes back here. They would have parking behind the. Um, apartment building and then maybe a driveway coming back out. Um, to add to that, you know, these parcels, um, the acquisition of these parcels. You know, you could go on Zillow today and see how much are, do these parcels cost to buy probably three hundred, five hundred thousand dollars each. Um, and so adding all that up, that's, that's a chunk of change right there and um, the. Uh, construction costs, um, you know, it costs somewhere between four and nine million dollars. Um, to build a, you know, a forty-eight unit building uh, development. Um, so. So, you know, I, I believe that. That's a hard sell for a developer to even be enticed to build here, given the. Acquisition cost and construction cost and very, you know, uh, forty-eight units is, you know, is. Is a lot, but it's, 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 is the cost, is that cost effective? And the one scenario that I could see it cost effective to a developer in and enticing is uh, talking about um. Owner occupied um, apartment buildings such as condominiums. Um, and so perhaps in that market, that would actually be feasible instead of a, a rental market. Um, and I, I believe, and I believe the planning department uh, also believes that that would. Fit nicely in a, in a down, in a village center, um, when you think in terms of the need for owner occupied. Uh, rent, uh, owner occupied dwelling units. Um, and so, okay, so we talked about the RVC. Now I'll go to the next slide, which is the BBC, which is shown in the hatching, the red hatching. And so per the table three dimensional regulations. Um, there is no lot area and additional lot area required. Um, for the BBC. And so um, the numbers of, of amount of units allowed. If the cap were, was removed um, is um, increased. Um, and so a lot size of twenty-five thousand square feet or point six acres could provide a three-floor, twenty-five unit. Apartment building with uh, dedicating thirty percent of the total lot area for open space and landscaping and whatnot. Um, a lot size of, uh, we'll say a hundred thousand square feet or two-point-three acres. Could provide a three-floor, ninety-three unit apartment building with uh, providing thirty percent of. Uh, open space. Um, there are four parcels that are uh, equal to or greater than. Twenty-five thousand square feet in size. Um, and so um, so there is opportunity to provide. Um, apartment buildings um, in, in these locations that would benefit from the removal of um, the cap. And let's see here, this is the RVC, we, there's very limited amount of properties that would. Benefit from the removal of the cap. Um, and those are shown in red, which is the existing Aspen Chase Apartments. Um, and the yellow parcels uh, would also benefit. Um, and so again, so Aspen Chase, um, it's an existing apartment building. Um, I, it, it looks and feels that they're maxed out. Maybe they could add a couple more. I, to be honest, I don't know how many apartment, apartment. Uh, units are there, but um, this yellow parcel here is the Salem Place condos. This yellow parcel is the East Amherst Village Apartments. Um, I can't recall what's here. And uh, this is currently, I believe, being developed uh, with a couple. Um, single-family homes. I think that's uh, perm- uh, is uh, currently being um, constructed. And then zoning at me, so at. Zoning um, at May, um, yeah.
Let me uh, just pause a minute, uh, Janet, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, could we go back to the um, North Amherst one? Because it, um, so I have a question, I have two questions. One of them is, um, with the um, BBC, um. If you added another story, you could add more units, right? And that's a lot, that's, that's, there's a footnote aid on height in um. Uh, actually, there's a footnote data on height and maximum stories for everybody. So if you um. So the parcels that we're looking at, if they had an extra story, they would all have more apartments, the potential for more apartments, right? And then, so that's, that's first question. The second question is, I keep on wondering, like, you know. What, how many units could you build as an apartment without a cap, given, you know, the various dimensional tables and the many waivers? Versus mixed use. Like, how many, like, you know, like, when I'm looking at the parcel, I think you have a seventy-eight or. You know, the one that's in um, North Amherst and it's mostly a little commercial strip where I've eaten many pizzas. If the incentive there is to take that building down and put an apartment center or combine lots. Wouldn't it be, you know, like, I still think it'd be better to have mixed use because you keep the businesses there. You get a ton of resident, rental units. And so like, what's the difference? Like, so if I took, you know, if I combined, you know, the two point, you know, a lot size of nine point. You know, ninety-nine, six hundred and forty-three, the two-point-three acres, if I put that together. Um, and I, how many units could I build? What if I added another story? But what if I was doing a mixed-use building there at three stories or four stories? What's the real difference, except that I've lost, you know, with the apartment buildings, I've lost businesses? Can you, I mean, do you understand what I'm asking you? It's like, what, what, what do you get that you couldn't just get through a mixed building? Like, how many more units by the apartments thing? Because again, these are all village centers. They're all focusing on a mix of businesses and keeping them vibrant.
Yeah, Maureen?
Uh, well, perhaps Chris or Rob could weigh in about the footnote, a comment about the building, the floor. Um, maximum amount of floors, um, but you know. Uh, I mean, the, but to answer your other question, I mean, the obvious difference is. Uh, you know, is there, you know, non-residential use on the first floor versus um. Or, you know, or is there not, you know, um, that, that would be the, the difference between the two uses. Um, and again.
Like ten, ten more units.
Oh, how many more units? Um, uh, let's see here, um, hmm. Uh, oh, I wish I had my, I wish I had my calculations in front of me. Um, uh, so. Um, uh, yeah, probably, you know, I would say my guesstimate, we're talking probably a difference of. Uh, ten to twenty units uh, that, you know, if, if the, the first floor was. Uh, all residential, then it, it would probably be, you know, ten, twenty units. Um, and then if that was a mixed-use building, then that would be non-residential.
Chris?
Depends on how big the building is. This first example that you have of twenty-five thousand square feet. A three, three-floor, twenty-five-unit apartment building would assume that you'd have like seven or eight units on each floor, right? Uh, eight, I guess, isn't eight times three, twenty-four? Anyway, so you would have eight um, units on a floor, so you would add. Um, eight, you, you would subtract eight units if the ground floor units went away. And they, you, then you'd only have sixteen units. And I think that's right. I think that's how you would figure it out. You'd just figure out how many units do you have on a floor? And you subtract the ground floor, and then you get the number of units that you would have in a mixed-use building.
Well, I was giving, I was giving the forty percent. You remember, we did, we, you know, there's like, you're only keeping forty percent for the businesses on the first floor.
I see.
Yeah, so it's, you know, so it's a couple, you know, maybe it's, you know, you lose three out of a twenty. Five-unit building, maybe on a ninety-three unit building, you lose ten. You keep the business.
And just to keep in mind, in this uh. This added a whole other layer to my, these build-outs, where the build-outs are reflected in the circles of my estimate. Is that to keep with uh, the proposal of uh, having a diverse mix of buil- building counts. For apartment buildings, um, uh, there, there is a mix of different uh, unit types. So in all these, there's, you know, single uh, one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units and, and. And um, some studios. So I, I really tried to diversify uh, the mix of bedrooms. Um, and so with that, the unit size um, changes, you know, a little bit, you know. But to, dependent on the, the amount of bedrooms, so um, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Maureen. Uh, yeah, y- you can proceed with your.
Okay, sure. Okay, so then moving on to, oh, yeah, we talked about the RG zoning districts at Main and Triangle. Okay, so. We're going to look at the, the slide looks at the neighborhood business zoning district, which is in front. Uh, reflected in, in purple dots and um. Due to, uh, per the table three dimensional regulations and the floor area ratio requirements for the BN. Um, you would need a two-acre lot to provide a two-floor, twenty-five-unit apartment building with. Uh, forty percent of um, open, uh, forty percent of the total lo- lot area for open space. None of these parcels are large enough to provide a twenty-five-unit apartment building. Um, and here, um, this is the BL zoning district. There's only three, three parcels. It, uh, they're located along the corner of Dickinson and College Street. The O'Connell Lot is located right at the corner. Um, none of these parcels are large enough to provide a twenty-five-plus apartment building. Um, this is the BBC zoning district located at. The corner of Dickinson and Main Street. Um, and this is where Triangle Street is right here. And then this parcel right here is um, Elements Hot Tub, just to give you another landmark. Um, there are only, uh, I'm not going to go through all these bullets, uh, but th- this last, I'm going to try to, try to, to speed this along. Just focus on this last bullet because it is sometimes the summary of the slide. So there's only two parcels. Um, that are large enough to provide um, a three uh, floor. Uh, um, are large enough to benefit from the cap being removed. Um, and so those two parcels are, is this parcel here and this back parcel here. Um, this is owned, I think, by the train station or Amtrak or whatever, um, train people. And um, and so this, I, so I would say this is probably unlikely to be developed. So perhaps this spot back lot right here could benefit from the um, cap removal. Um, and then zoning districts at College Street, South East Street and Main Street. So in beige, oh, and so again, um, let's see here. So this is College Street along here. Uh, this is Southeast Street, which then connects you to Main Street right here, and RVC. Um, is reflected in um, the beige color. Um, there are three parcels that are um. Uh, e- equal to or greater, greater to two-point-five acres. Um, and that is the, the threshold to um, provide twenty-five units or more. And um, those three parcels include the Fort River School. Uh, the Watson Farms Apartment, which is owned and managed by the Amherst Housing Authority, I believe. And um, the Town of Amherst property right here. Um, and so those are the um, only um, parcels. That could uh, benefit from the cap being removed. The other parcels are just, just too small. Um, uh, this is um, this slide um. Focuses on the BBC, which is represented in the sort of red pink catching. Um, and to, um, let's see here. There are seven parcels that are e- equal to or greater than um, twenty-five thousand square feet in, in size. Um, and so those parcels, which I'll um, wave my little mouse, um, those parcels um. Include this one, this one, let's see here, hold on, uh, this one. Uh, this one here, this, these two back ones here. Um, this parcel along Southeast Street, which is where the recently approved mixed-use building um. Was uh, approved by the planning board. And um, this parcel that is across the street from that, um, that, that approved project, so. Um, so those are seven parcels that could provide twenty-five u- units or more. Uh, in a, in a single building on that, on, on those uh, respective parcels. And then here is the BL zoning um, district along University Drive. Um, he, this street uh, here is Amity Street and the. Street along here is University Drive. Oops, sorry, sorry, whoops. Uh, and then this is uh, Route nine. And um, and uh, this parcel is where Big Y Plaza is located. And you would need to have two-point-six acres. Um, or a hundred and sixteen thousand square feet to provide a three-floor, twenty-five-unit apartment building. With having um, fifteen percent devote, uh, first, uh, fifteen percent of total lot area for open space. There are four parcels larger than a hundred and sixteen thousand square feet that would benefit from um, the cap being removed. And let's see here, I'll, I'll point to them. So this parcel here at the corner of Amity and University Drive where. Is it still called the ABC, the hangar? Um, that, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, that, that parcel here, uh, the part. No, okay, hold on, that parcel, this parcel here, which I believe is um. Perhaps where Seventy University Drive is, the mixed-use building, um, I believe is.
Yeah, they got redeveloped, right?
Yeah, so that parcel here, let's see here, um, where Big Y is. So one, two, two, three, and four, um, hmm. Sorry, I, 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 I don't know everything off the top of my head of, I don't know if this is where the post office is or um, which. Um, sort of. Um, entity is located here. Maybe Chris can point that out, but anyways, we, we, we're familiar with the sorts of businesses that are a lo- long University Drive. Um, and then here is the zoning district at Pomeroy Village. Um, and so this is West Street, uh, which is also uh, Route one sixteen. And then here is uh, West Pomeroy Lane and then turns into Pomeroy Lane. Um, and this slide shows the RVC zoning district, which is shown in the beige color. Um, and this is where an existing twenty-five-unit um, apartment building is located. And uh, and then further landmarks, uh, this is, this parcel has Mission Cantina and this parcel has um, like the Monet Dove. Um, okay, and so let's see here, per table three, uh, you would need to have a parcel of a hundred and eleven thousand square feet. Or two-point-five acres to provide a three-floor, twenty-five-unit apartment building with having um, for forty percent of the lot area. For open space. And um, there's only one parcel that is equal to or greater to. Than a hundred and eleven thousand square feet, and that's is the, where that uh, existing twenty-five-unit um, apartment building. Is located, which is owned and uh, uh, managed by the Amherst Housing Authority. Um, and so. They couldn't even expand it because that, that is the, that is the amount that they could provide. They have twenty-five and they only could provide twenty-five. Because of the table fi- three-dimensional reg- regulations. And then this, um, slide shows the BBC, which is reflected in the red hatching. And, uh, you would need to have, um, uh, you know, twenty-five thousand square feet to benefit from having a three-floor, twenty-five-unit apartment building. And then you would need upwards to a hundred thousand square feet for a, uh, three-floor, ninety-three, you know, apartment building. There are nine parcels equal to or greater than twenty-five thousand square feet that could, um, have a three-floor, uh, apartment building with twenty-five or more units. So nine parcels I had mentioned, so, um, I, Chris may, may need to chime in here. Um, so this is, uh, this parcel would, um, could have twenty-five units or more, um, which is already developed. Um, and this parcel here, uh, which is already developed. Um, this parcel is, I believe, um, you know, um, you know, these two parcels here, this one and this one could benefit, um, from the, uh, cap removal. Um, and so one, two, three, four. Oh, and then this parcel here, and this little back parcel here, this parcel here, this parcel here where, um, the gas station is, and this parcel. Um, and so, um, you know, as we said earlier, um, you know, retail does need, um, does need the population to support, to support the retail. And we believe that, that if there was an apartment building built in this intersection, this cluster here, it would actually, um, encourage the developer to provide retail or non-residential uses, because now they have that population to support the, the, the viability of, of that business or businesses. And so they do go hand in hand. And these, uh, you know, these village centers, um, are places where we want to encourage, you know, both residential and non-residential. And as I just said, they go hand in hand. Um, this, uh, zoning district, which is the BBC, is, um, at the corner of West Street and West Bay Street, West, the West Bay Street. And this is where Atkins Farm Market is located. Um, these two parcels back here, um, could, um, benefit from the cap removal. Again, as I just said in the previous slide, uh, you know, uh, retail and residential go hand in hand. Um, where, where if you, uh, have a population, um, that would, um, support uh, more retail and, or, you know, in general, uh, non-residential, um, and would make it, uh, enticing, um, for a developer, um, for you, for either of the uses. Um, and so, uh, zoning along Belcher Town Road, um, this is, uh, Route Nine or Belcher Town Road, and this is, uh, Gate House Road. And the existing use here is, um, the Amherst Insurance Agency. And that one parcel, uh, could, uh, benefit from the cap removal. Um, and, um, I, I believe that building was, uh, recently in, um, you know, redeveloped. Um, and so I, I'm not sure what the feasibility of this being redeveloped in the near future. But, you know, this parcel is large enough to accommodate probably two us- uses, um, um, or two buildings, maybe retail and, and residential. Uh, it would be interesting to see, um, see this redeveloped. Um, and, um, so that's, that's about it that I had. I think I went through all the, um, the zoning districts.
That was, yeah, very informative, Maureen. Uh, I see Janet and Maria, and then Doug.
So, um, I just, I wanna, I, I'm assuming that if you add a floor, you can add, you know, if you, if you have a twenty-five units on three floors, and you can add a floor, then you have twenty-five plus, you know, eight or something like that. So I'm just assuming you could add floors and you get more apartments. But, you know, when you look, when I look at Pomeroy, which has a lot of large lots, uh, it's, it's clear to me that hundreds and hundreds of apartment units can go into Pomeroy Village. Um, Atkins, I counted at least five hundred just on two lots. Um, and then, you know, even the Amherst Insurance Center property looked like it could take, um, a few hundred. And so I think it would be useful to people to know when we're gonna, if you're lifting the cap on apartment buildings in the different village centers, particularly the, maybe the quieter ones, we need to know the unit count, like what's possible. We asked this question about the BL, um, on North Pleasant Street. We asked it on Triangle Street. And I, I think before we talk as a board or make a decision as a board, we should know what we're talking about with the village centers. To me, it's like a red flag that we should be doing village center planning in Pomeroy Village. We should be doing it in Atkins. I know people would be a little startled who live around there, if, say, five hundred apartments went in those spots. Um, they may love that idea. They may want to see more of a mixed-use thing. They want to, they may want to expand the, um, the business district. This is why we have planning and village center planning. I don't know why, you know, I, I hear we had a planning process that started in twenty-eighteen for village center planning. It, it's obviously gone in fits and starts. But I, I do think that this is a huge change, and it's a change that's going to happen where people who live there knowing, or virtually anybody in this town at this point, um, it's just the beginning, the end of the summer. I think we can't, I, we have to know the numbers, and we have to have, tell people about it. I can't be more clear.
Okay, uh, let's hear from some of the other board members. Um, uh, Maria, and then, and then Andrew.
Uh, yeah, thanks so much for that, Maureen. That really was helpful, because it shows to me just how few parcels in the BBC and the RVC actually would even benefit from that lifting of the cap for apartments. So in the RVC, it was four parcels that, um, you'd be able to build over the twenty-four unit. So that's not a big risk. BBC, the two village centers, Pomeroy and Fort River, were the two that had the most number of parcels that would benefit from that cap lift. Otherwise, um, it was only three other VC, BBC areas. It was like two, three, and one, as far as the number of parcels that would be impacted by that lift on the cap. So that just tells me even more so that changing it from SP to SPR makes a lot of sense, because it's not a huge number of parcels that can even build with the new, uh, cap lift. Like what they can do now is already the twenty-four units. And what they could do with the lift and the maximum number of apartments is a handful of parcels like you just showed. So it's just sort of further instilled in my mind that, you know, the, the, the relaxing of SP to SPR makes a lot of sense. Um, so that was a really great, to see those numbers. As far as Janet's comment, about five hundred units. Uh, uh, it's hard to throw out numbers, scary numbers like that without, um, seeing real data. And, I mean, with the forty percent required open space for the RVC, um, you know, that, that's very few units. I guess the only two districts would be the two BBCs, the Fort River one and the Pomeroy one. Those were the two that had like seven parcels and nine parcels that could benefit from that cap lift. But you, as you said, most of them were already developed. Um, there was only a couple I saw that were like empty lots right now. So again, the risk seems very low relative to what's already allowable. Um, so I, I, I mean, your sort of presentation kind of really set my mind. Like, I, I think it's just a very safe thing to do SP to SPR. Um, I know there'll be a lot of comments from emails and, um, the same, you know, group that we keep getting these comments from. But I just want to make sure, you know, i- it's hard to gauge the whole town based on the few emails we get. So I, I just, I hope you're not being sort of like, um, pressured by a group versus like, um, I mean, has the CRC or Town Council weighed in? Uh, or are they just sort of following the recommendations of the Planning Board and the Planning Department? So, um, if it's more data we need, maybe just those two areas, the two BBCs would be worth studying. But, uh, the RVC, there's only four parcels that would even possibly have the, um, chance to build more with than what's currently allowed. So, um, yeah, the, the risk seems really low. So thank you so much for that presentation. It's really good to see all those numbers.
Thank you, Maria. Um, Andrew?
Thanks, Jack. I, I agree, uh, Maureen, that was super useful going into those deeper dives. Um, I s- I, I, in principle, I liked the idea of making it easier and going from SP to SPR. Um, I do, I do agree with Janet, though. I think like mixed use doesn't preclude us from adding residential. And I think any developer is going to do everything they can to maximize residential to offset having some, some retail there. And as I looked at some of those areas, and I, I couldn't keep track of, uh, RVC versus BBC, but like Atkins would probably do great having some residential around there, right? It's got a phenomenal market. Um, and I think that's one of the challenges to Atkins, is you have to drive there. Like it's, uh, some people, some people never make it over there because of the fact that it's so dependent on car. Um, as I think about, you know, Belcher Town Road, um, that's surrounded by housing. It's, it's obviously largely single-family, but you've got Roland Green nearby as well. That would seem to really benefit from having some type of retail, right? Now, it's, it's, a- as I hear these examples, it just makes me, uh, realize more and more that it's, it's hard for me to say that there is a good sort of one-size-fits-all. I think maybe we do need to consider RVC versus BBC a little bit differently. But I, I think the overall takeaway for me is that mixed use seems like it could accomplish all of what we're trying to do, uh, in that we can still build residential density, but provide amenities. Um, you know, my, my, my mom lives near Chutesbury, and I just think of, you know, just Chutesbury is like, anyone who lives in Chutesbury has got to leave for everything, right? It's just, it's, and I would hate to think that we're adding more and more housing at the expense of, of something to actually go to. Um, and would just add to like my comments earlier. We're, we're very much focused on, on downtown, right? In, in terms of what I think would make sense, and, and, and that would be, um, limiting apartments from fronting those, those major materials. Uh, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Tom.
Thanks. I mean, I, I think in theory, um, I actually agree with, um, with what Andrew's saying, but I also think that it reinforces our need to put residential near some of these locations. And that Atkins thrives off of the people that live in that residential neighborhoods right nearby and have a sidewalk that they walk to Atkins, and they go there at noon and try to get lunch. Every single person in that building is actually walked down there and actually in Atkins, waiting in line to get their lunch. So that is, that building is activated by the residential buildings around it. And I think that happens in all of these different locations. And if we go to Pomeroy and we bring more residences down there, it would bring more business, uh, in the future, because we'd have more people in a direct, um, feed into those zones. Um, and, and people would be shopping within those zones, rather than, as you say, driving there with a sense of purpose, like I'm going to drive there, park, and then leave. The people living in that neighborhood would be using that village center as a resource. And I think in many cases, we need to bring the people to that place first in order to actually make businesses viable, um, and not just, you know, drive up, drive away kinds of businesses. So, so I agree with you that we, there is a demand for both of those things. And I think, you know, the way it's written right now, it allows, if, if there is a need or a demand for mixed use, someone will come in and put retail there. They will put a mixed-use building. They will make that choice, because they will make a profit off of putting mixed use in that particular place, and there will be a demand for it. If they don't see that, they will put a residential building there to bring more people to that neighborhood. And so, so I do think that there is a sense that we're not trying to prescribe it by saying this is better than that, 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 you know, all these places are unique. Um, but I do think affording the opportunity for both of those things to take place on the site would be beneficial for everybody.
Um, I'm going to go with Doug and then Janet.
Well, I just had a small comment, which is I think the way I moved the question does sort of prescribe that you, uh, that we would be, we would prefer to have apartments in the RVC immediately next to the BBC, which, you know, in the hope that the, the BBC is where the mixed use would happen. And then the residential apartments might be, you know, on the periphery around that area. So I think, I think we're actually in a good place with, with my motion.
I agree. Uh, Janet?
So, one thing that we haven't talked about much is lot consolidation. Um, and so, you know, when you talk about what is on the ground now, and you're like, well, not that many lots are available. But obviously, with greater apartment density, there's incentive for people to, you know, build in those lots. Actually, a lot of times, one person owns several lots next to each other. I really, you know, when I, it's, I think that we have this one-size-fits-all, let's lift the cap. Um, every village center is different. The downtown is different from, from Southeast Street, you know, whatever that is down there. And we're not doing any planning. We don't know what these buildings are. We have no three-D bu- build-outs. You know, we can put a ninety-three-unit apartment building or two next to Atkins, or, you know, whatever. And, you know, this, you know, it's like, okay, now we've done that, and let's see what happens. And then maybe it's four stories, so it's not ninety-three units, maybe it's a hundred and twenty units. Um, because we, we have footnote A. That's, this is not, we're a planning board. This is, this is like a, not a one-size-fits-all sort of situation. I really do think we need to look at things one by one. And that is, in fact, what our master plan says. It doesn't say increase density, lift caps, and see how it goes. It says do village center planning, downtown planning. This planning board was saying to do downtown planning last year. Um, and we've gone from that to this kind of, you know, like freefall. North Amherst Village Center is, got like seven historic district buildings, and the RVC and the BBC. That has to go differently than Atkins or Pomeroy. Um, people who live in Pomeroy deserve to have some notice of this. Maria, you're tired of hearing from the same five people that you, you're not listening to. We don't talk to anybody else. Like, these people come to this meeting, and we haven't informed the community in any way of what these zoning proposals are. We have community participation officers, we have emails, we have lists. We have no clue what people are thinking, because they have no clue what we're talking about here. And so I just think, you know, I, I came into this thinking, I really think that this should be referred back to the Planning Board and Planning Department for some planning. Let's, let's, let's take a village center, let's take two village centers. We are going to do downtown planning with a form-based zoning person. Let's, we were talking about doing downtown planning last year on the planning. We all know it needs to have, happen. Um, we know that, you know, and so I, I, I would refer this back. It's too big of a change in too many places with too little information, and it's going to be a stunner. You know, and people deserve to know what's going on in their community and reflect on it. And if you don't want to hear from them, that's fine, but at least tell them. If you don't want to listen to them, at least tell them and have them talk and don't listen. But I really think we're, you know, this is, this is, this is probably of all the zoning amendments we've looked at as quickly as I think we have looked at them. This, I think, is the most far-reaching one. And I think it can undermine businesses also.
Thank you, Janet. Um, so, you know, again, I, I, I thought Maureen's presentation was, was, um, very informative, and, uh, we do have, uh, a motion to vote, and, um, and then we are short on time. Uh, and now, you know, we're going to have to reschedule, uh, some of the items on our agenda for other dates. But I'm wondering if, um, at this point, um, we've heard, I think, again, from Maureen, that, you know, there's, it seems to be fairly limited in terms of what may happen, and what may happen could be really good for the village centers. And, um, um, I think at, at this point, I would just, you know, ask that we, with any objection, that we just have a vote on, on the motion that's on the, on the floor here. So, Andrew?
Thanks, Jack. I, I'm, I'm prepared to vote, because I do think that this is moving in the right direction. But I agree with Janet that, that we should get down into like really more detailed village center by village center, by, by town center planning, and let's not lose sight of that. But, um, anyhow, just wanted that, that additional context before I voted. Thanks.
Okay.
What's the motion? Can we read that again?
The motion that we have is to accept with the changes that were made. Um, Maureen did some text edits, and then we're going to, we're going to change the review of the, uh, village centers from, it got. it got switched back a couple of times and we're going to change that back to, uh, site plan review from special permit for this apartment bylaw.
It was just the, just the RVC.
And the RVC only. Any further discussion? All right, let's do a roll call then. Uh, Maria?
True.
And Andrew?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
No.
And Johanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you all, Maureen. You know, great job breaking down all these different, you know, things you, 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 you've, you always do a great job with, with the GIS and, and everything at your disposal there. So, uh, appreciate it. Um, so, uh, Chris, we are not going to get to this parking one. We're not going to get to the mixed use building one. And then the election of officers and planning board reorganization. I think it's bill baiting the game for all these things. So you mentioned next week. Um, or we also, I don't have anything, I don't have any list for the 15th. Uh, so.
15th is a Jewish holiday.
Oh, so we're not.
Holy day. It's a Yom Kippur, so we can't have a meeting that night. Um,
Oh, okay.
But we could have a meeting next Wednesday, which I think is the third night of Rosh Hashanah. Um, but I think we can go ahead and have a meet, have a meeting that night if people are available. Um, and then another idea would be to have a meeting on the 22nd. So I think the eighth and the 22nd are possibilities if people are available. The 29th already has a pretty heavy, uh, agenda. So.
So it's, it's the eighth or the 22nd? I know the 22nd, I'm, I'm kind of tied up. Um, how are people looking for next, next Wednesday?
I can't do either. I, I was looking forward not to meeting on the planning board every week. I can't do it.
Uh, how about others?
Oh, I'm free both days.
Okay.
Doug and Tom are free both days?
Yes.
And, um, what is Andrew saying? Maybe?
Yeah, I, I, I've taken a new job with a lot of the West Coast people, so I don't know what, um, I'm not sure how the schedule is laying out yet. I'll probably need a couple of weeks for that to sort out.
Yeah. Again, I'm good for next week, but the 22nd, uh, a little bit more, more iffy. Um, so.
What about Johanna?
I think I could make either night, although I might have to pull some strings on the home front.
Yeah.
What about Maria? Maria's good. So we have Doug, Tom, Andrew, maybe, Jack, Johanna and Maria, who can all meet next week.
For the eighth?
Yep.
So that seems like a, I mean, uh, are you, Janet, are you out of?
I, I'm supposed to be out of town and then I, I can't, I definitely can't do it the 22nd. I have a thing. Health thing. Um, can, can Andrew do it? I didn't hear him say yes. So I didn't hear him say no.
I, I, I'm not sure yet, Janet. I've, I've got, uh, I've taken a new job and, and I've got some West Coast folks, so it's quite possible that I'm going to be rolling into after five o'clock hours for work obligations, but I can't, yeah. In terms of the weekly piece, that's going to be tough for this month for me to commit to.
What about the 14th, which is a Tuesday? Is that any better?
Um, let me, I may check my calendar. Hang on.
Well, normally I would have ag commission, but I, that doesn't seem to be happening.
Does Maureen have something on Tuesday, the 14th?
Uh, well, uh, not at 6:30.
No, you have D A A C. So that's right.
And we have the CRC meeting at two o'clock.
And CRC at two. So the 14th would be a possibility if people want to try for that.
Yeah.
So Doug is yes. Jack is a yes. Johanna?
We're talking Tuesday, the 14th?
Yep.
yes.
And, um, Janet?
I could do the 14th.
And, um, Tom? Yes, Tom is yes. And who else do we have? Um, Maria? Maria's yes. And Andrew?
Same answers before, maybe?
Maybe. So that's, um, either way, uh, oh, so one night we have five potential, one night we have six. Good. So it looks like the 14th is the better night. So go for the 14th.
What's on the 29th? I've forgotten.
The 29th is, um, the preliminary subdivision plan for Archipelago. Um, East Center Commons, John Robleski is coming back to talk about 446 Main Street. Um, you have this rezoning of parcel 14A 33 behind the CBS. Um, we potentially have the historical commission members coming to talk to you about a an, a newly revised demo delay bylaw. And then we have, um, yeah, that's it. That's it.
That's all.
Okay. So we're, we're not doing the eighth, the 14th?
14th, yeah.
Okay.
Is that good? That's good. Good.
And we're just pretty much completing the agenda.
So we'll do parking, mixed use buildings and, um, election of officers and planning board reorg. Is that right?
Okay.
Is there going to be a salary increase with these extra meetings?
Pam's, Pam asks me that.
Actually, that's really true for you guys.
Can the, can the town distribute like little gold stars? That we can put on our lapel?
Come on, can we get like gift cards to like share? Come on, something, a little spend some money downtown Amherst.
We'll have to talk to developers about developing a slush fund for our, our.
Get on the BID. Come on, let's get some.
Mission Cantina gift card would be good for me. So.
I just want to get on the ag commission.
That's mine.
Chris and Jack, we do have an A and R that if we could.
Oh, an A and R. Yeah, right.
That would be really great.
You want to do that?
I think we can do that. Yep.
Okay.
Should be easy. Famous last words. This is an A and R that relates to property that Ron LaVerdi owns along Research Drive in East Amherst. Um, Research Drive, you may know, is where Kate Atkinson has her office.
Okay.
And, um, it's that one that Pam is pointing out. So Kate Atkinson needs more parking. And she has made arrangements with a fellow who owns parking, um, or owns a lot near Old Belcher Town Road. She's purchasing this lot number two from him. And in order to connect the two lots, she would like to purchase a one foot wide strip of land owned by Ron LaVerdi. And that's what this A and R is about. Um, uh, connecting Kate Atkinson's two parcels with this one foot strip. So if you would, um, agree that this is not something that requires subdivision, uh, approval, then we can get, uh, Jack to sign it.
How does the one foot help?
Yeah.
It connects the two properties.
So it's sort of like, it'd be like a hammerhead sort of thing?
Makes it easier to, um, to, uh, say that the parking that's going to be proposed on lot two is associated with the building that is, um, where Kate Atkinson has her practice. So you can combine those two lots into one.
Does she have the parcel to the right as well?
To the right has a house on it? You mean lot one?
No, I mean, I mean, you, you, your cursor has been on the one that is kind of in the middle of those three. And what about the one to the right?
The one to the right, um, is former.
Camel Lee, Camel Lee or something?
It says Carrick's. See there, there you go.
Okay.
Carrick's LLC. Yeah.
Does she own that?
No, that's owned by Mickey Mark, or used to be owned by Mickey Marcus. Um, SWCA I think is the owner now.
So, so her connection will be through that one foot strip that goes along the bottom of Carrick's?
Yes, and Rob Mora, um, goes along with this. He agrees that that one foot strip will connect those two properties.
Wow.
So she actually owns, so her place Dragonfly Health owns that shaded area that's called Research Drive. And people have a right to pass and repass over that easement. So she actually owns all the way to the one foot strip. And then she will own the one foot strip that's to the, uh, east side of the Carrick's property where, um, Mickey Marcus used to be. And then she will own the one foot strip associated with lot two. So they will all be connected by that, uh, little one foot strip. It's sort of a magic of, um, A and R, uh, what, what an A and R can accomplish.
Could, could you just build a parking lot there and just use it? What, what actually stops her from just doing that without the one?
You mean on lot two?
Yeah, like, why can't you just?
Because it needs to be associated with the use. Otherwise it becomes, um, something that's probably a, um, it would, it would probably become something other than what we're proposing it to be. We're proposing it to be a parking lot that's associated with the use of the Dragonfly Health building. And if it were completely separate, then it would have to be shared parking, leased parking, um, commercial parking or something other than parking that's an accessory to her building. And by the way, this is being done under article 14, which is sort of an emergency. Uh, it was our temporary zoning that was passed um, last November. So there was a provision in there to allow medical uses to, um, expand or change. So do you agree that Jack can sign this? Essentially what you're saying is it doesn't have to go through subdivision, uh, the subdivision process.
Yeah, I, I just like full disclosure, people, I have worked on Research Drive with, uh, over the last 20 years with three different companies.
I feel like I don't understand enough to say yes or no, so I would just defer to the group.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any objection if anyone speak. I don't. Johanna?
I mean, it, it seems fine. It doesn't seem like it should go through subdivision review. It's one foot. Rob Mora signed off on it. Like, does it feel a little hokey or, you know, yeah?
Bizarre.
A little bizarre, but, um, seriously. But I, I think it's fine if you sign it, Jack, personally.
As long as Rob says it's good, I'm good with it.
Okay. So we'll be calling on you to sign this. I, I can either drive down to your house or you can come up here, one or the other.
I'd love to get on my house and come visit you.
Big thrill. Okay. All right. Good. That's it then.
All right. So we can, uh, again, continue the agenda, the portion of the agenda to the 14th, Tuesday. Um, and adjourned now. So.
adjourned at nine thirty-nine, is that right?
Yeah.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, well, safe travels, Janet, wherever you go.
I'm going to the Quad Cities. You don't know where that is?
Iowa?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
What if I said, Jack, what if I said I had a trip every Thursday morning? Every other Thursday morning. Could we?
I would say be safe, Andrew. That's what I would tell you.
Bye.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Pam's falling asleep.
Happy September everyone.